Mayor Coombs?
Present.
Council members Bagley?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Levinson?
Here.
Samore?
Present.
Santos?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a family here that's going to be receiving an award tonight and I have to make a proclamation and I don't want them to be up for three more hours, so I'd like to possibly consider maybe moving the order and put the proclamation in front of the public invited to be heard. Do I? Council member Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would move that we move the proclamation before public invited to be heard.
Second.
Great. Let's vote. You didn't vote?
Voting, sorry. Reading about fracking.
Yeah, all right. It passes unanimously, so we will move the proclamation up next. Next we'll have a proclamation designating Family Week in Longmont. A proclamation for Family Week in Longmont, November 20th through 26, 2011, celebrated for more than thirty years, National Family Week is held the week of Thanksgiving. It provides everyone opportunities to honor the connections that support and strengthen families, connections both within families and from families to their community. The city of Longmont's Children and Youth Resources has provided support to families in Longmont for twenty-seven years. This year, we celebrate our sixth annual Family Week in Longmont and join hundreds of other organizations nationwide to celebrate connecting children and families to local resources and honoring those who strengthen families. At Children and Youth Resources, we recognize that children live better lives when their families are strong, and families are strong when they live in communities that connect them to economic opportunities, social networks, and services. Therefore, we seek to recognize the families that we work with in Children and Youth Resources during this national celebration of the family. Children and Youth Resources will host a family meal for the families that participate in our programs and will also honor the Cisay Plaidet Asset Award winners on November 18, 2011. This year, we are holding the celebration the week before Thanksgiving on a Friday in hopes that city council members can attend. We invite city council members and their families to join us at our family meal and awards on November 18, 2011, from 6:30 to 8:30 at the Longmont Senior Center. The Pelosius family, on behalf of the Children and Youth Resources, will accept the proclamation. Should city council members have any questions or require additional information, please I guess now I'd like to... Go ahead to Kristen.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. Thank you very much for having us a little earlier on the agenda tonight. We're very excited to have the Palacios family here to accept the proclamation and hope that council and family members can join us this Friday.
All right. A proclamation designating November 20th through 26, 2011, as Family Week in Longmont. Whereas Longmont recognizes the strong families are at the center of strong communities and everyone has a role to play in making families successful, including neighborhood organization, businesses, nonprofit organizations, government, and of course, families themselves. And whereas the experience of growing up in a secure, loving family environment helps individuals develop talents that contributes to better citizenships and service in our communities, and whereas Thanksgiving Week is a time to honor the importance of families and recognize the special connections that support and strengthen families year-round, and whereas in honoring the importance of families, we recommit ourselves to enhance and extend all of the connections that strengthens and enrich families. Now therefore, I, Dennis El Combs, by virtue of my authority vested in me and the City Council of the City of Longmont, do hereby proclaim November 20th through 26, 2011 as Family Week in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to acknowledge the significance of family to the health of our community. Thank you. Next we'll move to public invited to be heard. We'll each, you'll get three minutes to speak, and the first person on deck is Steve Don Please state your name and address before you begin speaking.
Howdy. Steve Don Ellen, 2437 Terranian, Longmont. Mayor, city council members, to say I'm outraged would be an understatement. Longmont residents don't like top oil and gas drilling companies' actions, and we don't want them near our Union Reservoir. Accidents do happen. Longmont can lose the Union water supply forever, the water table, the aquifer, the topsoil, the groundwater, the air nearby, our wonderful view, and Green Buffer Zone. One million dollars or ten million dollars to Longmont is not worth the risk of losing our natural resources. What will they say if and when an accident happens? Sorry? Will they even pay their fine or just declare bankruptcy and move on to exploit their next victim? Give me a break. Longmont residents will not be happy to see huge drilling pads, tanks, access roads, heavy traffic, heavy truck traffic, noise, caustic air, and annoying lights in place of quiet green pastures, clean air, and water. They may have a right to drill, but do they have morals? I'm sure Tops Murray Herring will tell us to trust him, that there's nothing to worry about, and that everything will be fine. Longmont will earn big bucks, and that the moon is made of cheese.
No. Could we keep down the clapping, please? Be respectful of everybody. Next up, we've got James Kenworthy.
James Kenworthy, I live at 107 Caribou Place. I'm here because I have children, and I have a lot of younger, I have friends that are younger than I am, and I think they deserve a decent world to live in. I sent everybody on the city council a trailer of the movie Gasland, and I got three replies. Thank you for replying, you know who you are. One person has actually seen the movie, and I hope everybody watched the trailer. In that trailer, you saw a man in his kitchen, double-wide trailer, turn on his kitchen faucet and light a cigarette lighter and set the water on fire. He singed the hairs on his arm, and that's after they drilled a well close to his house. In the Denver Post today, there was an article about the, one of the oil companies, they say there is eighty billion gallons of oil underneath this part of the Front Range, most of it in Weld County. We don't need the oil under Union Reservoir. There's no need to drill for that oil. We're going to have plenty of economic activity without that. So I have a few questions. How is drilling and pumping compatible with recreation? How is drilling and pumping compatible with wildlife? And how is drilling and pumping compatible with the city park environment? And how can any of this be in the interest of the citizens? Who will be responsible when toxic gas starts bubbling up from the bottom of the reservoir into that irrigation water? And has anybody ever tried to irrigate with toxic laden water? Any money the city earns will not be compensation for the park at Union Reservoir. We need to keep the oil and gas wells as far from the city as possible. We don't need the dirty air. We don't need the noise. We don't need the traffic, and we don't need the trash. Our children and younger friends deserve a decent world to live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Next up, we've got Claire McLean. Can you please state your name and address, please?
My name is Claire McLean. I live at 2450 Airport Road. Thank you for having us tonight, and thank you for letting us know what's going on as much as you have. I moved here a year and a half ago, and I moved to Boulder County on purpose, family, and I looked all over Boulder County and I chose Longmont because of what appeared to be clean air, clean water, recreational facilities, open space, bike paths, all the things that I found very attractive. And I live by McIntosh Lake, which is amazing, so I feel very blessed. But the fact that this is maybe going to be upset makes me happy that I did not buy, and because I want to live in a place with clean air and clean water. I picked this up today, I was over at the GMO meeting, about Longmont, and I don't have my reading glasses on, but it says, where is it? Hang it, I'm on the wrong page. I just marked it. Well, anyway, I'll find it in a minute if I have time. I was asked to be on the residents committee recently, and I was really happy that I was chosen, and what they said to me and to everyone there is, "Look at Longmont five years from now, and what do you see? And what do you see that we can make our town so that it is a place where everyone wants to come, and where it would be attractive for people to come and live here?" And we all said that we wanted clean air, clean water, open space left, and drilling was brought up. Of course, I had no idea of the massive amounts of drilling that was possibly going to come in here, and it just made me really, really look into the future, into a place that I would want to live. One thing it says on the back of this, and this is for Longmont, and the main thing in big letters says, "Quality of life is what we do best." And I think you guys are tampering with the quality of life here. If you're looking to build a town where people want to come and live, then we need to set an example, and we need to make this a model town, a model county, where people can say, "We're moving to Boulder County," because they are not doing drilling, because they care about their water. Water is huge. It's going to be huge in the future. It's something that we need to look at. And then we also care about our future, which are our children, and the children that are being raised here. We want families to stay, and people are not going to stay. They're going to go elsewhere if their water is contaminated. We need water to survive. So if this is about money, I hope you will reconsider. It needs to be about the people, and it needs to be about the citizens. The article that I was looking for that I couldn't find defines Union Reservoir, and it's in here somewhere, I'll find it as soon as I get back, is being a glacier that it was formed so many years ago.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, no, no clapping, please. Next up, Jennifer Williamson.
My name is Jennifer Williamson. I live at 485 Greenwood Lane, basically right behind Union Reservoir. I had gave you all a packet of handouts that basically include in there your natural resources and habitat assessment update recommendations that were made by the Walsh scientists and engineers. Also in there was a map of what is planned for the renovation and update of what you have planned, which is absolutely phenomenal in my, in my book. I'd like to just read the introduction paragraph of that, give you a little history. Union Reservoir is a 736-acre body of water managed by the City of Longmont Natural Resources Division. The reservoir provides many outdoor recreational activities, including fishing, swimming, wakeless boating, camping, windsurfing, and picnicking. The Union Reservoir site... The Union Reservoir site also supports natural habitats such as open water, shoreline, wetlands, stands, cotton trees, and grassland areas, all of which provide wildlife habitat that is otherwise limited in the general vicinity. This wildlife habitat basically includes bald eagles, a burrowing owl, which is a potential, northern leopard frog, and black-tailed prairie dog colonies, of which there are presently two. Basically, originally it was called Calkins Lake. The reservoir basin was carved and filled during the last glacial age. It's been around a long time. It is one of a few natural lakes in eastern Colorado. In 1903, the Union Ditch Company drilled a tunnel to release water from the lake into the nearby Saint Grain River. Basically, that is our water source. And the potentials now put forth by even bringing up fracking, of which you can refer to in the Scientific American Journal, that also is included with your handouts. It's, this is the last publication of November 2011. It basically just came online. It has scientific, scientists from all over the country, scientists from all over the world, that have been de- debating this controversy of extracting natural gas out of the land for eons and decades and decades and decades and decades. I implore you to read this and take good note, there's the pros, there's the cons. Basically, the bottom line is, why would you spend four years of research time to try to preserve, update, and improve Union Reservoir as a wildlife recreational park when you're just gonna destroy it by allowing drilling? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have, uh, Darcy Jude. And please let's not clap or cheer or anything after each person speaks.
Uh, I'm speaking jointly tonight. I'm speaking for Darcy Jude and for myself, Kay Fissinger. Darcy's address is 4042 Hawthorne Circle. Mine is 2199 Tree Creekside Drive. Darcy is the Vice Chair of Longmont's Water Board. And I'm the Chairman of Longmont's Parks and Recreation Board. Drilling in Wattenberg Field is coming to the edges of Longmont. And if the first wells are successful, it can continue west into the heart of the city. Now we have the unique opportunity to consider the effects this will have on Longmont's livability. If we rush into this unprepared, we may have regrets for twenty years to come. Other nearby communities are also assessing the impact of large-scale drilling within their boundaries. Longmont should take advantage of the experience of those communities. Council has met with Weld County and heard of their positive experience. But that's been mostly in rural areas. We should also hear from Boulder County, which has had drilling on open space. And from Arapahoe County, which is about to experience a drilling boom. Other counties and cities are drawing up their own regu- regulations. We should learn about what they are considering. We should learn what other counties and communities are proposing to add to their regulations. Regulations that likely may go beyond those that Longmont currently, currently has in place. We should ask for air pollution controls, pre and post drilling water sampling, enclosed drilling mud circulation, visual barriers, and landscaping in our parks. Those are the big picture items. We should also know about the operating company. Weld has had, good, Weld County has had good experience with their large companies, but problems with smaller ones. This smaller company, Top Operating, has drilled on Longmont property before. Did they perform as they said they would? And lastly, our investigations should be a joint effort with Council, Water Board, Parks and Recreation, and the Environmental Board in any studies, meetings, and presentations. Major negative consequences can occur if we proceed with too little preparation. Deliberate study can prevent future regrets. Thank you on behalf of myself and Darcy Jude.
Thank you. Next up is Richard Jude.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I hope you're ready for a break from fracking. Um, on the, oh, I'm Richard Jude, 4042 Hawthorne Circle. Uh, on the recent ballot was an issue 2A that I have a particular interest in. And, uh, that actually passed, I think, more clearly than, uh, any candidate did. Uh, there is a, uh, great deal of citizen interest, uh, on, on this point. Properly, staff had not made detailed plans for what to do, uh, now that we're under the legal restrictions that Telecom had bought from the legislature. And, uh, Tom Roniotis tells me that, uh, LPC is starting to, uh, to gear up. And, uh, in fact, they have my, my confidence that, uh, they can run an enterprise, but this is a little different than supplying, uh, 120 volts, 60 hertz. Now, that, that's sort of uncontroversial. But, uh, you know, we, we have, uh, a lot of other issues, such as, is there gonna be adult content? Is there gonna be religion? Is there gonna be education? What sort of, uh, uh, system are we actually gonna put together? And who are the major players going to be? At the moment, there's a great deal of momentum and citizen expectation. Uh, and, uh, I encourage Council to facilitate, uh, LPC's, uh, activity in this regard. Specifically, uh, I, I propose that, uh, the, uh, a working group be set up to assist LPC. Uh, this, among other things, just to put the public in mind of reasonable expectation for, uh, what they're, uh, what they can realize out of this. So I suggest that there might be a permanent advisory group, such as the Cable Trust or the Water Board. Uh, there could well be one-day charrettes, uh, such as the Focus on Longmont that we have had. Uh, in this town, there are many, many interested folks, uh, lots of nerds and geeks and the, uh, financially, uh, it's a town full of geeks, for sure. Um, plus the financially interested organizations that would wish to provide content to be distributed, uh, over the, uh, uh, the channels that, that we have. And just imagine what, uh, LPC could do with Comcast's $300,000. Uh, so, uh, if, uh, the company can put up that kind of money to defeat a, uh, a proposal, uh, I'd like to think that they can cough up enough bucks to, uh, integrate into the, uh, the, the city in a productive way. They are a legitimate stakeholder, absolutely for sure. But, uh, uh, Council is to represent the people, not the, uh, not, not the companies. And, uh, I, uh, I propose that Council will give clear indication to LPC that, uh, let's get rolling and, uh, uh, take advantage of our having gotten ourselves out from under that, uh, onerous legislation. Back to the fracking.
Thank you. Next up, Teresa Foster. Could you please state your name and address?
Good evening. I want to say welcome to our new mayor and our new council members. I'm Teresa Foster, 712 Thornwood Way in Longmont. Mayor Coombs and City Council, I'm here to speak in opposition of plans for hydraulic fracturing in the city of Longmont and on Longmont Open Space. The Denver Post reported today that oil and gas companies are hugely, hungrily waiting to drill the entire Wattenberg Field. Longmont is on the western edge of this vast field of natural gas and oil that is locked up in shale rock. Do we allow the floodgates to open and become like Weld County, where tens of thousands of wells have been fracked and where there has been serious degradation to the environment and people's health? Here are some sobering facts for you to ponder. One, fracking uses tremendous amounts of water, a precious resource in semi, semi-arid Colorado. An initial frac requires one to million to four million gallons of water. That amount is enough for domestic water for thirty to one hundred homes a year. However, since each well requires up to thirty-two frackings, well, you do the math. Where is this water going to come from? Do we divert from, from our homes or farms? Or let the rivers dry up and quest for more natural gas, our so-called desired transition fuel? The EPA has documented that the aquifer in Pavilion, Wyoming, has been contaminated by fracking fluids. The people were told not to drink their water and to ventilate the house when they took a shower. However, drinking water is conveniently being trucked in from the outside. Just think, how will fracking affect the water quality in our Ogallalo aquifer that is used for farming? What happens if there's a leak beneath Union Reservoir? Are you aware that the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Committee's website, that there are hundreds, if not thousands, of documented spills and complaints? Who is responsible for cleaning up these leaks? Those whose land, water, or health has been affected have been told to hire an attorney. Were you aware that the toxic chemical concoction in fracking fluids is a trade secret and we aren't privy to knowing what is being injected beneath our feet because of the Halliburton loophole? I wanted to point out in your packet for the meeting tonight that the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Committee provided answers to the questions that the public might, might have. Answer, the law is intended to keep the general public safe when drilling and development occurs and is not directed at protecting individual property values or a preferred quality of life. Does this mean that the drillers are not responsible when they destroy your water resources and your property values drop? I attended last night's Park and Rec Advisory Board meeting. During the question and answer period, Brian Schumacher mentioned that planning and zoning will be the entity to approve whether or not fracking will occur near Union Reservoir, not City Council. I'm grateful for the decision made by the Parks and Rec Advisory Panel to not recommend that the city move forward on allowing fracking based on the information they have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next up, Sam Schabacher. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Sam Schabacher, 5706 Prospect Road in Longmont. Mayor, City Council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. Um, I grew up in the area. I attended Sunset Middle School. I now work for an organization called Food and Water Watch, or Consumer Organization. And we have 225 members here in the city limits. So I'm here on behalf of those members tonight as well. I wanted to, um, present, uh, with you with some information first tonight, which is our newest report that just came out documenting chapter and verse the air, health, and community impacts of hydraulic fracturing across the country. I have copies of this for all of you, so I'll make sure that I hand those off. I wanted to encourage you to really make sure you take the time to ask the representative from the Colorado Oil and Gas Association tonight, a series of questions related to this practice. For example, are they planning on conducting an economic study looking at how the drilling here in Longmont will affect property values? In Wise County, Texas, property values dropped seventy-five percent as a result of the drilling that took place in their town. In Dish, Texas, the mayor moved away from his town, saying that the town was no longer inhabitable because of the impacts of drilling. Are the companies that are proposing to do drilling here going to evaluate the impacts on your tax base and on the property values here in town? Ask them what they're gonna do in terms of air quality monitoring, baseline testing before and after. In Sublet County, Wyoming, which is south of the Tetons, an area that is renowned for its air quality, there are higher ozone levels than can be found in Houston, Texas, or Los Angeles. Ask them what they're going to do to mitigate those impacts, or if those, if those impacts can even truly be mitigated. Ask the representative tonight and the drilling companies that want to come in here and begin to drill within your jurisdiction, what they're going to do to protect the water quality. Will they be doing baseline testing? Ask them what just happened with the EPA finding earlier this week up in Pavilion, Wyoming, in which a smoking gun seems to be, have finally come out, showing that the oil and gas industry was in fact indeed responsible for the contamination of this town's drinking water. Ask them why there are thousands of closed settlements all across the country where landowners are unable to speak about how the oil and gas companies that drill next to their property have contaminated their drinking water. How they had to sign a, a veritable gag order in order to receive a small pittance of compensation for the harm that had been done to their families. So I really encourage you to ask these tough questions. Um, I'd also like to say that I'd encourage you to invite back folks that are not sympathetic to oil and gas drilling, that are experts in water, in air quality. And finally, I would just like to invite everyone that's here tonight, we're having a meeting on Friday at 6:00 PM at 7:23 AM.
Okay.
If you're concerned, please come and join us.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is Sarah Sharp.
Sarah Sharp, 161 Hinson Drive, Longmont. My name is just a series of, of several questions, including, um, I would like it to have the representatives of the Oil and Gas Commission address, um, Colorado Oil and Gas Code 34-60-116 regarding mandatory pooling. Um, and, and I also would like to know if that, if that code section provides for, um, the, uh, residents who are forced into the, the pool, if they're exempt from liability for property damage. I don't believe that Colorado allows for that. Also, I do not see tonight that you have any representative from, um, a, a mortgage company. Um, in looking in the internet, I found out that it appears that Bank of America, Wells Fargo, and other institutional lenders are now, um, considering not giving any mortgages to fracked property, which means you can't refinance and you cannot sell your property unless you have, uh, someone who has cash. So if you could please address these issues, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up is Richard Leonard.
Name is Richard Leonard, 2100 Steel Street, Longmont. You've already been wrapped with packages, giving you information on this, which by rights, a good deal of research should have been done by the Council. I don't want to berate you about that, but that is in all of our interest. Every man, woman, and child in Longmont. I'm not long for this world, I'm in my eighties. But I'm looking at what is gonna happen to the next generation and the generation after that. You look at the information that's available on the internet, in books, papers, you name it, from England all the way through the United States. It's a bad idea. But if you're going to do it, don't do it where you're going to harm long-term environment. And that means don't destroy the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Ken Bonetti.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Ken Bonetti. I live at 1178 B Monroe Drive in Boulder, Colorado. I've been living in Boulder, Colorado for seven years. I've never come to Longmont, although I follow Longmont affairs fairly closely. Reason being that I, uh, am considering, my wife and I are considering moving to Longmont. Uh, I have a job at the University of Colorado, but, uh, the economic situation in Boulder is such that it's very hard to, um, buy property or, uh, to have discretionary income for some of the things that we like to do. So we've been looking at Longmont, touring the neighborhoods. We love, uh, the downtown area, we think it's just a beautiful place. However, if, uh, Longmont wishes to, uh, allow, uh, fracking in its city limits or there, uh, or anywhere near, nearby, it's not just a city issue, it's a county issue. Uh, pollution that tends, uh, uh, fracking and gas drilling of this sort doesn't know political boundaries. Also, it set a precedent that might encourage other cities in Boulder County and elsewhere, uh, in this region, uh, to do the same. But, uh, primarily, we're concerned about Longmont since we're considering moving here, uh, seriously considering moving here. Uh, we want to know that the, uh, the, the City Council, the folks that, uh, uh, attend to the welfare of the citizens of Longmont, uh, will keep the best interests of the population at large in mind. And if, uh, fracking is allowed, uh, then, uh, as potential residents, we will not be able to trust the air, the quality of the water, or the quality of the food growing, uh, grown locally and perhaps sold in the local farmer's market. And, um, we'll frankly have to just consider a different place to live in. We're, we're, I'm talking about, we're fully employed, tax-paying citizens that can contribute to the well-being and the quality of life in this town. So really want you to consider, uh, what you're, uh, about to do and to, um, think in the long term. So really want you to consider what you're about to do and to think in the long term about the general welfare of your citizens and not the short-term monetary gains that might be had from allowing a corporation to come in and destroy Longmont's quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members, and welcome to the new ones. My name is Shelley Basman. I live at 3414 Lakeview Circle. That's in northwest Longmont by McIntosh Lake. And it's delightful. I'm almost 40-year resident of Boulder County, and about five years here in Longmont. I'm here because a few weeks ago, Brian Hanson invited anyone who was concerned to come to the Environmental Affairs Advisory Board because there'd been a sudden change in agenda in that a company was thinking of drilling for oil and using the fracking, hydraulic fracking messy on Longmont open space within the city of Longmont. And I've been to that meeting and to the one, it was just the other night, Theresa. And I'm here tonight. And I am deeply concerned about fracking. Apparently, it works okay in rural areas. Well, not entirely. But in a semi-urban, near-urban environment, I think it is totally inappropriate. I believe that TOP, which stands for Take or Pay, has the right to drill. Apparently, they have to go through some procedures here with Longmont, the zoning and planning. And I would encourage the city of Longmont to place as many requests. We cannot regulate, but we can request that the state does not require big surrounds containing the fluids, the half-million gallons of fluids that can come back up, laced with lord knows what chemicals and radioactivity. That those be contained and that they pitch in for the roads. The other information I have is that there is so much natural gas being produced in the United States of America today that it is now being exported. There is a big drive to get permits from the US government to export this natural gas. We are not saving it for my grandchildren and their children. And I think that is wrong, whether they have the legal right to do this. To take every scrap of natural gas that is under the ground now deprives future generations. We are borrowing from them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Angelica Applebaum. Probably butchered that, so maybe you could state your name, please?
My name is Angelica Applebaum. And I live at 1509 Northwestern Road. My family and I moved here a couple of years ago from Texas, and it's been much, much better. And we were hoping to stay. Can't think of anywhere else that I'd rather live. I'm here to state my opposition to and express my concerns about fracking in and around Union Reservoir. Ultimately, let's not drill first and ask questions later. In a recent congressional report, Colorado Congresswoman Diana Deget stated that 29 out of 750 different chemicals used in fracking fluids are known human carcinogens. I don't want that anywhere near the town that I live, and I'm sure you guys don't either. Congresswoman Deget also has sponsored legislation for disclosure of such chemicals. And I think at the very least, we should wait to see what that says, if we ever get an answer. Our community's concerns are to include the proximity of drill wells to homes, and of course, children, contamination of groundwater, disposal methods of fracking fluids, and of course, pit lining regulations, of which there do not seem to be any. The EPA has begun a two-year investigation into the safety of fracking, the initial results of which should be out by the end of next year. And the final report should be sometime in 2014. In light of the serious health concerns and potential for water contamination, Union Reservoir is used for irrigation for agriculture, drinking water, and of course, the stability of the ecosystem within the front range. We as a city must wait, if we drill at all, and at least for the EPA's report. And just a last-minute reminder, we are all uphill from other cities. It's not just us that we need to worry about. The water tables and the land within our boundaries do affect other cities and people as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council. I spoke last week. You certainly got us out of our seats at home and got us in front of you for the first time in our lives. We've lived here for 10 years. My property is right on Union Reservoir. The 16 Padwell site is proposed to be right behind my house I mentioned last week. Want to just share a story here. Imagine yourself walking down your driveway some spring morning, and it's warm out. It's 5 o'clock in the morning on a Saturday. And you're going down to get the paper, and you notice your neighbor's car, and the keys are in it. You've always liked that car, and you said, for a moment, you go, I could take that car. You see opportunity. I could do that. And then you start rationalizing with yourself. You could say, he shouldn't have left the keys there in the first. It's his problem, you know? But then you have this pause, and you go, that's my neighbor. He's a guy that's always kept his lawn green. He's kept value in this neighborhood. And here I am back again. I'm your neighbor. And I would hope that you would pause and say, I'm not going to do that to my neighbor. We have caretaken that property for 10 years. We've leased it from the city of Longmont. Our animals have been on it. And as you consider that, when you heard this lady just say, maybe a mortgage company won't even let that person sell their house. I just want to ask if you would do that to your neighbor. We would hope you wouldn't. My wife worked at a bank here for a year and a half. And while she was at that bank, a gentleman came in to use her services one day, and he was a very broken man. He got pretty burned when the Walmart expansion happened. Now, I don't know your side of the story on that. I don't know his side. I've never met him. But if that's true, if the walking wounded are walking around the city of Longmont because that's how you cared about your neighbor, I would hope that you would pause now, just like the man in my story, and say, I'm not going to do that to my neighbor. Thank you.
Next up, Baden Applebaum.
I'm Baden Applebaum, 1509 Northwestern Road. And I wish I had prepared the notes that my wife had, but I didn't. The point is, I read an article earlier today that was published in October of this year, October 11, 2011. This article talked about the fracking in New York State. And they're basically asking the governor of New York, there are over 250 doctors and physicians, that are asking the governor of New York to put a moratorium on fracking until there are actually long-term studies done to see its effects. Now, I don't think anybody that spoke here tonight is a doctor or an expert or a scientist. These people are. And there's a large group of them that are really concerned. This is, this system, what they're proposing on doing, is essentially using chemicals such as that when they come out, and 33% of the water that comes out of this is contaminated, with radium, radon, and uranium. For those of you that don't know, and somebody said earlier today that it may contaminate our water or our city for 20 years, try a half-life of 1,602 years. If something goes wrong with this, it's going to make Longmont into the new Chernobyl. So when you guys are considering this, it's crucial. This is not some joke. This is not something about, let's put some money in some pockets or whatever. And I'm sure we can create plenty of jobs in this city without the use of fracking. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Kate Johnson.
Hi. My name is Kate Johnson. I live at 11227 North 66th Street here in Longmont. And I'd like to welcome you, Mayor Coombs, and the new council members. Welcome everybody else back. And thank you for allowing me to share my concerns with you tonight. In the research that I've done about the issue of hydraulic fracturing, I've read and heard many alarming statistics and details on the one side, and reassurances and denial of problems on the other side. Much of the information, many of the facts are both overwhelming and potentially disputable. Some of the questions I have about fracking include what chemicals are really being used in fracking, where and how are the wastewater and leftover chemicals of the fracking process being disposed of, who's overseeing the safety and health concerns of not only those in the communities where fracking is taking place, but also the workers themselves? Who will take responsibility for potential problems, spills, accidents, or contaminations that will inevitably occur at some point? And what will happen to the property values of the people whose backyard this is being done in? While all of these are issues that concern me deeply, there's one fact that I'd like to focus on tonight. If you were to dispute every other issue about fracking that the opponents have brought up and will continue to, the one indisputable fact that should be a concern to every single citizen is the amount of water used in the fracking process. Here in Colorado, water is scarce enough. But when you think about it, everyone and everything needs water for life. So everyone everywhere should be concerned about these facts. So consider these numbers. And you know, it varies depending which report you read, but there's a range. Each fracking well drilled requires somewhere between 1 and 7 million gallons of water for the drilling process itself. Each time that well is fracked, another 1 to 7 million gallons of water. Each well can be fracked up to 18 times by some counts, up to 32 times by some counts. So if you do the math, the amount of water needed for one well could range from 19 to 224 million gallons of water. Where's that water going to come from? And how's it going to get here? It's estimated that it will take 400 to 600 truck trips just for bringing in the water to start one fracking well. What is going to be done with the wastewater when the drilling is complete? Here in Colorado, we don't have that kind of water to spare. My understanding is that you, the city council, do not have the power to stop the fracking. I hope that's wrong. I hope you do. Maybe it's Parks and Recreation. I don't know for sure. But what I will ask is that you do whatever you can to set conditions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Judith Blackburn. I live at 3724 Oakwood Drive. I'd like to congratulate the two new council members and the new mayor, and also welcome all of the rest of you back. I understand, in a sense, your awesome responsibilities, of which this fracking issue is one, but may turn out to be one of the most important that you have to deal with. I understand also that the need for some kind of relief in these economic times, the possibility of many jobs, of revenue badly needed, is a huge motivator to go forward with these plans. I also understand that, as the previous speaker, my daughter Kate, mentioned, it's possible that you don't have the authority to curtail fracking here. But I think 100 other communities have put on record that they don't want fracking, and I would be so proud if you took such a stand. All of the people in favor of fracking, and the companies and associations and regulators associated with it, really want the best safety regulations and assume that they will be following them. I think the record shows that really all the easy oil and gas has already been extracted. And no matter whether we talk about deep-water drilling or this fracking process, we're now talking about gas that's difficult and dangerous to extract. It's probably the last gasp of fossil fuels. And I fully understand that we're in no way ready, as a nation, to move into renewable energy, as much as we might all like that. But this present temptation is almost overwhelming in its simplicity. That natural gas, when burned as a fuel, is clean, but when extracted from the earth, has potentially devastating consequences. And so the one may outdo the other. The bottom line here is that I think I would feel very good if you stood up and said, we don't want this here, especially on our open space. But I think also, it's possible that you could put some requests through to the companies. Some of these have been mentioned already.
Thank you.
That's about the end of my time.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Well, I have more to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to be here. My name is Lois Hickman. I live at 5125 U Highway, Longmont. Does Big Oil have more influence over some of the officials we elect than we, the people, who elected them? This appears to be true whether on the national, state, or local level. Why were no representatives critical of Big Oil's plan to bring fracking into this community invited to this meeting? There were no representatives of this very important other side of the story on the October 18 meeting with the Weld County people. Only information favoring Big Oil and offhand and cavalier dismissal of the very significant detrimental effects of fracking were presented. Is there fear of dealing with the truth, of having to make thoughtful deliberation? Does short-term greed always have to trump over long-term survival? Is there no thought about the effect this lethal injection into the skin of the earth will have on our health, on wildlife, water, air, agriculture, the quality of life that is our birthright and of all living things? Other communities have seen the dangers of fracking. Contaminated well water, poisoned livestock, destruction of wildlife, tap water that catches fire and explodes. In test results released last Friday, two butoxethanol was found to be contaminating the wells in Pavilion, Wyoming. Some of the health issues related to this substance include nerve pain, neurological impairment, liver damage, cancer. There are no safe levels. And earthquakes, even in Blackpool, England, which has never experienced an earthquake before fracking and hasn't had another one since it was banned. In Arkansas, Virginia, and Oklahoma, a significant increase in minor earthquakes, largely related to the slick water fracts that were begun 12 years ago and the reinjection of waste saltwater into disposal wells. When the fracking disposal well in Braxton County, Arkansas, was closed, the quake significantly decreased. Oklahoma is seeing a thousand-fold increase in earthquake activity as fracking has increased from five or six a year before 2009 to over 1,000 a year since. from five or six a year before two thousand nine to over a thousand a year since, all shallow quakes near fracking sites. Fifty earthquakes occurred in Oklahoma on Sunday, November fifth. It is too easy to succumb to the romancing of big money, big power, to their very studied way of psychological manipulation. Matt Carmichael, manager of external affairs for Anadarko Petroleum, is advising oil executives to read the Army-Marine Corps Counterinsurgency Manual for its useful lessons in how to fight communities' opposition to oil development, calling those who oppose their takeover insurgents. I quote Mr. Carmichael, "There's a lot of good lessons in there, and coming from a military background, I found the insight extremely remarkable." We can rise above this manipulation. We can be more intelligent than that. We can pay attention to what is right for many generations to come, not only for us-
Thank you, Lois.
-but for our great-great-great-grandchildren as well.
Next up, Marilyn Decker.
Marilyn Decker, seven-three-nine Ridge Creek Court, Longmont. Good evening, Mayor Coombs and city council members. I would like to share with you some concerns about clean water in Longmont after fracking. I've had a little experience with this. Besides owning property, here in Longmont, we own property on a lake in upstate New York. The town at the end of the lake has been in a downward financial spiral for a few years. Pennsylvania offered to pay this town a substantial amount of money to take their water contaminated with unknown chemicals and radiation after fracking. Tankers brought Pennsylvania's water to this poor town's waste treatment plant, which was never designed to treat the chemical and radiation-laced water. After the water went through the waste treatment plant, it was dumped into a river at the end of the lake. When partially-treated, highly-contaminated water like this is dumped into a river, is considered a dead zone for fish, waterfowl, and other wildlife nearby. I tell you this true story because the same thing could happen at our Longmont Waste Treatment Plant in our Saint Green River. Another way that the contaminated water might be handled is by evaporation pools above ground. Then, the land, water, and air is polluted. As the water and chemicals evaporate, we, the citizens of Longmont, will be breathing it. And if the evaporation pool's walls or base should fail and leak, there would be a terrible pollution of the land. Beautiful, pristine Union Reservoir could be polluted forever by drilling beside and under it. Our water table, deep underground, could be polluted forever by contaminating chemicals leaking and left behind. Our land would be made ugly with tanks, evaporation pools, drilling rigs, and approximately one thousand trucks per well, twenty-four hours per day. Our rest would be disturbed by huge spotlights all night long and the incredible noise from drilling and trucking. Furthermore, I do not understand why open space would be allowed to have drilling and fracking on it. To me, open space is an area which is often a buffer between counties and towns, an area where wildlife is allowed to flourish, where nature lovers can walk and often bike, where cattle and horses can graze, and where beautiful mountains, lakes, and reservoirs can be viewed unobstructed. Fracking for natural gas is an ugly, nasty business. If this happens, our children and grandchildren will wonder why we ever allowed it. Please do not allow this to happen here. Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Next up, Stan Dembski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I, my office is sixteen-sixty Lincoln Street, Denver, and I simply wanted to come to the council tonight to introduce our association. We work very closely with many of the presenters that you'll have tonight. I'm president of the Colorado Petroleum Association, who have distributed some facts and figures brochures to you, and just want to offer our resources and our members' resources to you and other representatives who are making important policy decisions about natural resource development in Colorado. And we appreciate the manner that you're approaching this issue and want to, we simply have one thing we want to say, and that is, in this tough economic times, we continue to hear the question, what, where are the jobs? Well, in Colorado, oil and gas contributed seven-point-nine billion-
Hey, please put the sign down.
Seven-point-nine billion to Colorado's GDP in two thousand eight, and our industry employs fifty thousand people directly and one-hundred-and-ninety thousand associated jobs in Colorado. Simply put, we think that oil and gas development throughout Colorado is a wonderful economic opportunity for this community and for communities throughout the state of Colorado. And we know that you'll receive some very informative presentations this evening, and simply wanted to express our interest in seeing jobs be created in Colorado. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Next up, Doug Cooley.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Doug Cooley. I live at four-fifty-two South Carr Avenue in Lafayette. I lived out in Frederick about three years ago, and one night was watching the ten o'clock news, and to my surprise, they were interviewing folks out in Fort Lupton area, not necessarily in town, but in the neighborhood, the neighboring area. And the report was, where the, they had the news report cameraman and reporter, and they were, had a gentleman turn on his faucet in his kitchen sink and take a cigarette lighter and light it, as you've heard in some of the other stories. This was astonishing to me, and living in Frederick, obviously very concerned. It had always been about my own water. You know, that area is a coal-mining area that dates back a long ways. Approximately a year later, a film came out called Gasland. You've heard about that again tonight. And I had the opportunity to go into Denver and watch a documentary, this documentary with some friends. And again, was astonished that this film, about a two-hour film, was, spent about an hour or plus time on Colorado, much of it out in Fort Lupton area, and some of it up in the mountain region, rifle, town of parachute, and so forth. So, this is, is quite a film, and I have brought copies. I'm gonna keep it short. I've got copies for you all that I got, and I would like to distribute those to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, McConhand. I probably butchered that one pretty bad, so.
You did. City Council, Mayor Coombs, Dr. McConhand, sixteen-seventy-four Stardance Circle, Longmont. First of all, I wanted to say to everybody here in this room, all of us here have invited Top and Anadarko to drill in Longmont because they produce a product that we all want and need. They're not drilling it to take it home, they're drilling it to sell it, and they sell it to us. We buy it. I think probably only Strider Benson rode his bike here tonight, so let us all remember that. I'm a family physician here in town. I have two children, four years and fourteen months. I live across County Road One from Union Reservoir, and I run on County Road Twenty-Six around Union Reservoir several times per week. I want to say plainly, as a family physician, as a parent of small children, and as a resident of Longmont, I'm not worried about the health risks of drilling and fracking at Union Reservoir. Again, I want to say, I'm not worried about it. I have a Bachelor of Science in Petroleum Engineering and a Master's of Science in Geophysics. I worked as a petroleum engineer for eight years in Alaska and the Mid-Continent here in Colorado, Oklahoma, and Texas. I have drilled and fracked many wells. No horns. I have no interest in oil and gas now. I'm long out of it. I'm not financially interested. I don't support drilling at Union Reservoir. I support maintaining our open spaces, open space. But I see a frank hysteria surrounding the procedure by people who simply do not understand it. Radioactivity comes out of the wells, whether there's fracking or whether the oil and gas that we buy comes out of it. Fracking generates a one-to-three-centimeter crack in the rock about four-to-ten-thousand feet below the surface. Our water table's around one-to-two-hundred feet. The surface is in a rock formation that is isolated by several thousand feet of rock and cement from the surface. It's an old procedure and relatively benign. In general, I think it's probably far less harmful to our environment than building the Walmart or widening County Road One. Kate Fissinger has probably made the most rational comments this evening. What needs to happen is hold the drilling and production companies accountable for stewardship of their lease, protect and compensate affected property owners, and maintain the principles of open space. But above all, please calm the hysteria. It's up to the oil and gas companies and city council to provide the information and transparency and education to the public to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? I have a question.
Sure.
Councilman Dagley, I just have a question. I don't, again, this is meeting number two. The, I'm sitting here thinking, my question is, I'm hearing a lot of information, and I'm just thinking, it's public invited to be heard. I know that everyone gets a chance to talk, but I'm human, and I have twenty-four hours in a day, and I just happened to ask, so how many more people? We've got like thirty left. And so, thirty times three, I'm just thinking that, as an attorney, I get tired in the courtroom, and I know everybody here is really, really concerned about this issue, and I'm concerned that we're gonna be here till one, and then when it comes time to really listen, I just don't know, do we sit here till, you know, we can wait, I mean, I'm just curious. No, 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 I'm not saying shut up! I'm just curious, I'm not, just like I said, this is my second week on council, and my question is that if we hit one or two o'clock and we can't go anymore, what is the process? Do we table it? Do we go next time? Just point of order, I just want to know.
I guess we'll deal with that when eleven o'clock rolls around. Next, next, next one is Daria Laverne.
I will try to make it brief. My name is Daria Laverne, Gera Laverne, and I live at four-twenty-nine Emery Street, just down the road. Public speaking was my least favorite subject in college, so please bear with me. First of all, referring to the man who tried to use the jobs angle, my older son is in Iowa right now, and he builds, repairs, and maintains wind towers. There are plenty of jobs in sustainable energy. This council should consider bringing in as much as we can into Longmont if we want to create jobs. A human being can stay alive without food for many months. A human being can live without water for maybe two weeks. An average human being can only live without air for about three minutes. I will return to that in a bit. Just last week, Bill McKibben and his three-hundred-and-fifty.org successfully encircled the White House, resulting in President Obama taking a closer look at the scientific study surrounding the proposed Keystone XL Pipeline from Canada, which uses the same potentially destructive technology as what is going on in Longmont. This study was conducted by an insider company hired by Canadian XL to ignore any negatives. Here, this, a fracking tower has recently been erected with little, if any, concern for the use of millions of gallons of drinking, of water, millions of gallons of our dwindling Colorado water supply, surrounding drinking water contamination, and least of all, the health concerns of any of the citizens of the western portion of Congressional District Four. Oh, I missed a part, sorry. See, I told you. If the President of the United States in the White House encirclement can consider taking a closer look at the science, a moratorium of sorts, then perhaps the city of Longmont can take some time, too. Our water supply is too precious. Without clean water, the citizens of Longmont would not survive even two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sally Martin.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and city council. My name is Sally Martin. I've lived in Boulder County for more than forty years, and I now live in Lafayette. I'm here to represent Mike Foot. Mike is a candidate for the Colorado Legislature for House District Twelve, and he asked me to come and share with you his interest in this issue, that he will be paying close attention, and that he urges you to take the time to thoroughly investigate the issue, and most importantly, the impacts on citizens here in Longmont. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, Cindy Banfield.
My name is Cindy Banfield. I live at three-five-five-five Cottonwood Circle in Frederick, Colorado, and I also run my business here in Longmont at six-twenty-seven Kim Park Street. Mayor and members of the council, I thank you for letting me speak this evening, and before I read my statement, I just want to tell you that it's really difficult to sit here and listen to this because my husband and I have already been impacted by this. And, but we are committed to share our story and let the public know what the impact has been for us. So, anyway, I'm here with my husband, Alan Pinkerton, to comment on the impact of gas well drilling near housing developments. During this past year, our lives have been enormously impacted by gas drilling just three-hundred-and-fifty feet from our house in Frederick. The impact includes our property value, cost of landscaping, and the change in the quality of our quiet lives in a rural area. We are committed to informing the public about the repercussions residents experience when drilling takes place so close to neighborhoods. In January of this year, Incanna began to drill and hydro-fracture six wells within the green, within the green space behind our home. For close to six months, we had round-the-clock noise, lights, truck traffic, and odors. We attempted to keep our blinds closed to block the lights of the hundred-foot-tall lighted studded tower, but the house vibrated all the time, just like my voice is right now. You could feel the vibration all night long. Most annoying at night were the headlights of the trucks that ragged across the rooms of our home and cast shadows like searchlights. At one point, there were approximately fifty trailers parked behind our home to buffer the sound, which did little to help. We smelled petroleum and a rotten egg odor almost daily for six months. We still smell that, this same smell as gas tankers enter the area to fill their trucks. We now look out and see a set of four tanks, three separators, and two tall combustors. As oil and gas industries move into more urban areas, the state's requirements for setback, noise, and air pollution need to be looked at more closely. We realize that consolidating wells and tanks in one location is better for the environment than scattered operation, but the impact has an enormous, but this has an enormous impact on neighbors.
Thank you, Cindy. Next up, Gary Bean.
Good evening, Mayor and city council.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, I've been a resident here in Boulder County for about 35 years. I'm very concerned about fracking anywhere at any time. Uh, I wanna just give you a few statements from the, uh, United States House of Representatives Committee on Energy and Commerce Minority Staff Report on Chemicals Used in Hydraulic Fracturing. This was prepared by committee staff for Henry Waxman, Edward Markey, and Diana Deget. Uh, just, uh, between 2005 and 2009, the 14 oil and gas companies used more than 2,500 hydraulic fracturing products containing 750 chemicals and other components. Overall, these companies used 780 million gallons of hydraulic fracturing products, not including water added at the well site between '05 and '09. As was stated by another speaker, 25, 29 of these chemicals are, uh, are, uh, cancer-causing or may, may cause cancer. They're used in 650 different products that are used in fracturing. Um, my whole concern is what happens in the fracturing, and I think it should be a national topic, is when the fracture does not stop because of the structure of the rock, or because it's, it runs into a, an aquifer or a void in the rock, but it goes straight to the surface, and then these chemicals are being released, uh, underneath the, uh, topsoil, under pressure. Thank you.
Gary, could you state your, your name and address, please?
I'm sorry, Gary Bean, 400 Emery, number 201.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Next up, Barbara Fernandez. Please state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Barbara Fernandez. My address is 1917 Garden Wall Way, Longmont. Um, I've been a resident at Boulder County 25 years, and I just moved to Longmont a year ago to retire here. So you can imagine how nervous I am when I hear about all this talk about drilling on open space. Um, I've lived here a year, and I was chosen to be a member of your citizen feedback committee because they were trying to get demographic, uh, representation. I think I probably represented someone new to the community. And at that meeting two weeks ago, they, they talked to us about your strategic plan and what we'd like to see in 2016, and the whole issue is that we did come up with the whole quality of life issue, and that you have such a gem of the, of the St. Frank Greenway path, and we're all talking about Union Reservoir today, but you're also going to plan a well or whatever at Sandstone Ranch. I mean, so again, here you have this beautiful bike way, and then what? You'd have a, a well in that area. Um, I don't wanna talk about all the problems with fracture oil drilling. I'm here to tell you what you should look at. I was in government, I was a government employee for close to 30 years. You need to be bold, you need to create a moratorium. I think what you're seeing here is that everyone has a lot of questions. I think you have a lot of studies. The national government is looking at this, state government, and a lot of cities and counties now are looking at their own ordinances themselves. So yes, I understand about mineral rights, I understand about surface rights, et cetera, but you know what? You can hang up things in court by deciding to issue a moratorium, look at this issue, have everything be at a standstill right now, so you look at ordinances on what would you like to put on for conditional permits, et cetera. Then when you do that, um, then you could figure out from there, uh, whether or not it gets challenged in court or not. But you have El Paso County, you have other conservative counties in the state looking at slowing things down, waiting for the state, uh, to come up with fracking rules itself. So I am here not to tell you about all the dangers, et cetera, about fracking, but I guess I'm here suggesting, hey, look at all the questions, look at what everyone is saying, and why don't you be bold and slow it down? Newspaper articles have said time and time again that the oil and gas companies, when they go into a community, they see if they're gonna be welcomed or if there're gonna be a lot of problems there. They're gonna go other areas where they can get things smooth. Why does Weld County have so many wells? It's a little easier to do there than in Boulder County. So why don't we stand up and just slow things down, and even if it goes to court, at least it'll be a long time before anything's done. Thank you.
Next up is Chris Porzuk. Um, let's see, it's P-O-R-Z-U-C-Z-E-K.
Chris Porzuchek, 12624 Weld County Road One. Good evening, everybody. Here again, was here last week. Um, I read the 48-page agenda on this session. I, you know, I saw a lot of things in there that justified you guys to keep moving forward with this project more than anything else. Um, and, uh, what I didn't see in there was your ability to stop it and how you guys have stopped it in the past, and I know you guys can stop it, and that's probably more than anything. There's surface rights, there's mineral rights, and you can buy both of them. You can buy surface rights, you can buy mineral rights, you can buy the lease from these people. So I don't wanna hear that there's no way we can stop them, and that seems to be what I'm hearing from the City Council and the local paper, and that, or, uh, or the planning and zoning, not from you guys, sorry. Um, but I know you can stop them, you guys know you can stop them. Let's hope you have it in your hearts to be able to, uh, stop them. The only thing that stops you is money, right? Money. You're standing on millions of dollars, you own the mineral rights to some of these properties. They only have a lease to drill there. You stand to make millions if you let them. You stand, or you can buy it and not ruin our open space. It's a decision you guys have to make. I think it's gonna come to you from planning and zoning, and it's gonna be on your guys' shoulders more than it is the planning and zoning. Uh, I can only urge you, uh, to make the right decisions, uh, to do that. Obviously, I don't, uh, want this to go through at all, um, but, uh, you know, let's just touch base on the fracking a little bit. You know, they, they'll tell you they got rights, they gotta feed their families, you know, it's jobs, everybody's doing it, right? Gotta be okay. I don't think so. I think it's a little, that's a little wrong. Um, you know, they'll also tell you, you gotta follow strict guidelines. Well, these are the guidelines from the same people, you know, that wrote the laws, uh, that have, uh, an agenda to keep this oil and gas fueled, right? So I urge you once again not to do it. Newsflash, they don't know what's gonna happen 40 years from now. This is new technology. They don't know what's gonna happen. This is going to be our drinking water 40 years from now. You can say it's not, who knows, in the future, but let's be real, uh, water is scarce, and this is gonna be, uh, our drinking water. Um, I happen to live 350 feet from where, where 16 of these wells are supposed to be proposed on the open space where you guys own the mineral rights. You have the power to negotiate with top. I don't wanna hear that we cannot stop them, I really don't. Um, I live there, 350 feet where you're proposing this. I have my son right there, his name is Jack. I wanna raise my family there, and I can't.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Next, Padma Wick.
My name is Padma Wick. I live at 4213 Frederick Circle. Good evening, Mayor Coombs and City Council members. You have an awesome responsibility to the men, women, children, animals, plants, soil and air of Longmont and surrounding communities. Like doctors, your responsibility is to first do no harm. Tonight, many people have spoken to you about the specific severe dangers of fracking, and I wanna remind you that there are not two separate water supplies and air for rich and poor, black and white, council members, and the public. What happens to my children and grandchildren happens to your grand, children and grandchildren. If we don't show courage and integrity on behalf of our children and grandchildren, when would we have the courage to do the right thing? There's an old religious saying, "If you were in a lifeboat with your worst enemy, would you drill a hole on his side?" And I'm a little curious. I know that many people have already left, but I'd like to get some sense of how many people in the chamber today are opposed to fracking. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Padma. Next, Daredier Butler. Can you bring her up, please?
It's a variation on a theme. Um, it's Daredier Butler, and I live at 117 Apple Ridge Road, Lyons. Thank you very much for having all of us here. I'm here on behalf of Sierra Club. Uh, Sierra Club has 4,000 members in Boulder County, and in the state of Colorado, we have an, in excess of 20,000 members. I'm, I'm talking on behalf of our members. So Sierra Club opposes oil and gas drilling of any sort on open space, but specifically and especially fracking. Sierra Club has serious misgivings about the use of this technology anywhere in the absence of sufficient oversight and regulation that would prevent damage to air quality, land and surface, and groundwater quality. We do not believe the state of Colorado's regulation of this industry is sufficiently stringent to prevent the sort of problems that we have been reported, seen reported by neighboring landowners in many places, including Weld County. We urge you not to move forward, further regulation and oversight is required. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, John Dordi. Please state your name and address, please.
I'm John Dordi, 832 Baker Street, right here in Longmont. In 2005, federal legislation was passed exempting gas and oil companies from Clean Air Act, the Safe Drinking Water Act, and the Clean Water Acts, which allowed for the type of fracking that we're talking about, which is a hands-off, chemical-ridden type of fracking that is new to us. It's only been six years, but there's surmounting evidence of the severe harm fracking can do to our land, our water, and our health. A couple of years ago, you've already heard about this, Fox 31 News documented such a case in nearby Weld County where a woman named Renee McClure could not only light her tap water on fire, but was suffering from an endless string of illnesses. When she called the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission to ask who could help her, they said, "No one, get an attorney." She could find no one to help or accept responsibility. I am here to express to this council today that if this plan is allowed to proceed, the responsibility for the damage to the health and well-being of our citizens, the damage to our precious reservoir, which our children and families use for recreation, and the damage done to our property values and overall reputation of this city, falls on your shoulders. Whoever helps push this plan through and doesn't help stop it, and I believe you can stop this, will be personally, personally accountable to the people. You have a face and a name and an address that all the citizens can know, you have a door to knock on and a step to drop problems on, and none of the special interest groups or gas corporations who may have contributed to your campaign will not be there to stop it. This is your decision, your responsibility. Do not treat it lightly. You are responsible.
All right. No hands, please. Um, please keep this civil. Well, no demonstration of emotions. Maybe please have Adrian Shanker, please.
My name is Adrian Shanker. I live at 1621 South Vivian Street. I make a living as a consultant to the natural gas industry, which is where most of the hysteria surrounding hydraulic fracturing got started. And I'm very familiar with the narrative that has played out regarding this issue over the past few years. I am in no way connected with the drilling that will occur in our community and will not benefit from it any more than any other citizen of our city. First, I would like to mention a few facts about our area that are crucial to understand, to understand regarding this issue. Much of the geologic resource that is targeted in our area are oil-bearing formations. To my knowledge, these formations lie about 7,000 feet below the surface. In other words, there's about 1.3 miles of various rock layers between the potential fracture zone and our groundwater. It is virtually impossible for molecules of oil and gas to migrate through that much geologic material and contaminate groundwater. The part of the oil or gas well that does come in contact with zones containing groundwater consists of steel pipe encased in concrete. On the other hand, there are methane-bearing formations that are fed by naturally occurring organic processes that are very near the surface. When these formations are penetrated by water wells, the result is co-mingled water and methane. Environmental activists who are opposed to the use of any fossil fuels and therefore opposed to all forms of drilling blame this co-mingling on the oil and gas industry, who may also have wells in the area. They have combined their efforts with disgruntled landowners who are belatedly finding out that they have never owned the mineral rights to their land and are now forced to live next to oil and gas wells that they never wanted on their land. In one instance, in Texas, a family connected their faucet to a propane tank and ordered to light it on fire and use it as evidence against the industry. Oil was first drilled in the Denver Basin in 1901 near Boulder. There are thousands of oil and gas wells in our area that most of us never even notice. Our area is an example of how industry and community can work together for mutual benefit. There are plenty of legitimate reasons to be opposed to drilling an oil and gas well at a certain location, but hydraulic fracturing is not one of them. I've heard a lot of opinions expressed tonight. I haven't heard very many facts. I would just encourage you to focus on facts. I have two young children, and hydraulic fracturing is one of the least of my concerns regarding their future. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I'm gonna start reading like three names at a time so people can get ready in the queue. Chris Pran, uh, be next, and Sam Vasquez, and, uh, I think it's F-I-V-R-E Gray. So, next up is Chris.
Chris Pran, I live at 1613 Atkinson in Longmont. I, uh, I've worked in Boulder County managing and protecting open space, and so open space is very important, important to me. I don't support fracking, and from what I'm hearing, there are variances about how detrimental is it. But I look at open space, we've got visions and goals for open space, and drilling is not one of them. Open space is, is the public's land, and if those mineral rights were purchased, you know, use those, those purchasing mineral rights to protect it and to protect it for open space and for wildlife. And if there are no detrimental impacts, the oil and gas companies shouldn't have a problem if you set a bold and strong mitigation plan. They shouldn't have a problem agreeing to a mitigation plan if there's not concerns or issues over detrimental environmental impacts. So don't buckle, I ask you to not buckle under the pressure to do this now. I'd ask that you would wait and set up a strong and comprehensive mitigation plan to protect us and to protect our open space, and, um, just do what's right for, for the goals and vision of open space. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening. My name is Sam Vasquez, Samantha Vasquez. I'd like to welcome you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to let you know that I do not, uh, agree with fracking, and I totally oppose it. It's not good for our community, it's not good for our water source, and I just don't want that to happen here in Longmont. We love Longmont, so just wanted you to know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, um...
Fiora Gray.
Pronounce that again, please?
Fiora Gray.
Oh, it's pretty neat. What's your address?
940 North Street, Apartment 5, Boulder, Colorado. I stand here not only speaking on my own behalf... I stand here not only speaking on my own behalf. I am speaking on behalf of a large group of concerned Boulder County citizens who came together this past Saturday to collectively agree upon the following position via direct democratic process. It reads, "Whereas, the practice of hydraulic fracturing, also known as fracking, poses serious threats to public and environmental health through releasing known carcinogens and neurotoxins into soil, air, and groundwater, and creating seismic instability. Whereas Longmont City Council is considering whether to allow two oil and gas corporations to frac right below Union Reservoir and in other open space areas. Whereas this could cause grave harm to Boulder County's watershed and drinking water, agricultural lands, and local food supply, air quality, and the enjoyment of our area's natural beauty. Whereas we oppose the irresponsible exploitation of our natural resources by gas and oil corporations who put profit before public health and business interests before earth stewardship. Therefore, be it resolved that we strongly oppose the practice of fracking within Boulder County and surrounding areas and implore the Longmont City Council to do everything in its power to stand up for the interests of the people rather than corporations." Thank you.
Thank you. Except... Yes. Councilman Gabe Santos.
Thank you. In our rules of procedure, it does say, "Public Rule 5: Citizen Participation." And Mayor Combs has done a very good job trying to ask people not to refrain from whether it's hand motions or hissing or what have you. In Rule 5, number D, "Those attending city council meetings shall refrain from destructive, vulgar, or abusive language, applause, heckling, or other actions that interfere with the orderly function of the council. The chair may take reasonable steps to maintain order and dignity of the council meetings." So, everyone has a right, whether you agree with them or disagree with them, has a right to come speak for three minutes to the city council. So, I would ask everyone, please, allow people whether it's this, or this, or what have you. That should not occur. Everyone has a right to speak, and that's what we're here for. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Santos. Next up, Duane Luis. And following that will be Strider Benson. And thank you, Strider, for riding your bike.
My name is Duane Luis. I live at 2686 Pearl Howlett Road, Longmont, Colorado. And the people waving their hands up like this in the air like this is in support of the people. Is it disruptive for me to say? I think you're going a little too far there. Now, myself, what's legal is not necessarily right. A lot of these rules were put in place right after the turn of the century in closed doors, behind closed doors, in a public space at the highest level of our government, and we still don't know what those agreements were exactly. You have an opportunity. You not only have an opportunity, you have a responsibility. This isn't fracking that's being done on private property. It's being done on the people's property. We bought it. We paid taxes for it. We paid for it. We voted for it. You have a responsibility to protect it. And you don't even want to listen. I'm not wrong. I'm speaking the truth. Okay, I won't. You all have a responsibility. Life comes before money. People are more important than prosperity. Just because you need a job doesn't mean you should go out and take a job that's going to risk your life. Come on, think. I'm angry. I'm real angry. You have a responsibility. You have a deep responsibility. Exercise it. Stand up. Make me proud of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I respond, please? I know, look, look, things that are going through my head this week. I want the opportunity to ask questions. I'm taking notes. I am listening. What I want to hear and what I want to ask are the questions that you guys are asking. Where do the chemicals go? Where do we put the wastewater? Who's responsibility for the spills? Is it when things go wrong? Who pays for the decrease in property values? Where does the water come from? What are the conditions we can set and what we can't set? So, my earlier comment was, I don't want to, it wasn't intended that I don't want to listen. My concern is, when do I get to ask the questions you're demanding we ask? I sense that you're angry. One of the questions I have is, this is my second council meeting, one of the most, probably one of the most important questions to come up. Well, three of us are new, so, I mean, there's all kinds of things going through my head this week. Why is it coming up now? You know, so I do want to ask some questions. It's not that I'm not listening. It's that I want to ask the questions of the people that, I just want, I want the same answers you do. And I'm just anxious to get there. That was my, and my question was one of process of, when do we get to ask them if we go so late? That was my only question. So, that was simply it. If I gave the impression that I wasn't listening, that's not the case. I'm taking notes, and I want to ask the questions. That's simple.
Thank you very much, Councilman Bagley. You're up, Strider.
Strider Benson, 951 Seventeenth. Welcome, Mayor Combs and City Council. We have those same questions, and that's exactly why we're here. New England had town hall meetings 350 years ago. Some of them went on for a while. That is the absolute foundation of our country. It's wonderful that we have a preliminary public hearing tonight on fracking, although tragically, the legal and sovereignty issue may be already preemptively decided by corporate domination 150 years ago. The split estate of extraction companies, it's far worse now. At this very moment, 300 persons, real persons, neither corporations nor eggs, real persons are meeting in Longmont to try to preserve our dirt, our water, our food, and our wildlife from Monsanto-inspired GMO poisoning. Ronald Reagan 30 years ago said, "Government is the problem." Just maybe corporate impunity, corruption, and theft is the problem. Last week, the good people of Arizona, Ohio, Maine, Mississippi, Iowa, Kentucky, and Longmont voted to protect human rights, labor rights, voting rights, women's rights, fiber optics, and the protection of democracy from powerful corporate efforts to destroy our democratic process. That effort is still going on. The world's largest democracy, India, has sent an army of 200,000 people, 200,000 soldiers, to invade the interior and to commit genocide and annihilation on the Audawasi Native people who have cared for their forests for thousands of years. India learned this genocide from us. There are 150 million Audawasi persons. Human beings have many complex, encompassing, and spiritual values. A living earth is one such value. Corporations have only one value: to make money, to accumulate power, and to use that power to make more money. In this pursuit, they ravage nature and savage human society and institutions. Unless we choose wisely, we will not survive.
Thank you. Thank you, Strider. Next up, Jeffrey Larson. That'll be followed by Rosalyn Seale.
Hi there.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Jeffrey Larson, 2425 Mapleton Circle. I've been a resident of Boulder County for 35 years. A former Assistant City Attorney for Longmont, acting City Attorney for Longmont. I have, as you contemplate these oil and gas issues, I have a few questions. A couple of questions that I'd like for you to run past, not only your City Attorney, but your Special Counsel for Oil and Gas. Prior to acting on these oil and gas issues, if you could define and delineate what recourse will Longmont residents have when the tap water catches on fire? Find that out before you proceed. And the second point, in order to preserve and protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community, could you compel the oil companies to disclose what chemicals they use in the fracking through lease negotiations as well as zoning regulations? You have the power to do that. Health, safety, and welfare of the community. And you have, I know that it seems to be a state issue here, and you have limited authority, but you do have negotiating power, and you do have the zoning power. Good luck.
Thank you. Rosalyn Seale.
Hello, Council. My name is Rosalyn Seale. I reside at 832 Baker Street here in Longmont for the last four years. And I agree with a bold moratorium for Longmont on fracking. We look at this map over here on the right, the one where it's mostly pink. If you get up close to it, you see there's a whole bunch of little dots all over the place, and they're already fracking, and they've been doing that. I see things like pink ribbons everywhere. And we're gonna, what are we gonna do? We're gonna race for a cure? I want to race for a cause. We have all this cancer. We have all these autoimmune disorders in our society. We don't know where they're coming from. We can't explain them. We can go to our family practice physicians, and they don't have answers. And what are these two? Neurotoxins and carcinogens? Benzene, lead, diesel fuel, putting that into the ground on purpose? And we don't understand what we're doing. I mean, we don't know where that's going. I don't care if it's 8,000 feet down. I don't think we have a way to track where it ends up. We need a council to focus on the conservation of energy so we can use less fossil fuels in our city. I was specifically disappointed when the City Council decided not to relegate more funds for solar photovoltaic a while back because that's the sort of thing that we need to do so that we don't need so much natural gas, so that we don't have to frac more. And in addition to a moratorium in Longmont, I think we as citizens all need to think about a moratorium in the state. We need to think about bigger, but certainly not on our open space lands. This is not the place. And that's just not what they were relegated for. And I think, I would argue that waving our hands is not disruptive, but a way to show our agreement quietly after a speaker has finished. And that's what we did. We were actually directed to do that this evening. A lot of us were at the GMO thing, and they were like, "Don't clap. If you want to do your thing, then at least that's not noisy and whatnot." Okay, one other thing is the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. This is their words in your packet. Their authority to prevent and mitigate significant environmental harm does not negate its obligation to encourage development of the oil and gas resource. To encourage the development of the oil and gas resource. That's what the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission's authority. That's what they do. So, we just need to keep that in mind when they're talking to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Oak Chisar, and then followed by Pamela Gear. Then will be Lynn Seagal. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Ashley Coyote. I'm speaking on behalf of Oak Chisar, who had to leave a little earlier. Her address is 3 County Road, 87 South Jamestown. My address is 215 Linden Drive, Boulder, Colorado. So, in Germany, in Nazi Germany, there was a man named Adolf Eichmann, and he was responsible for coordinating all the rail lines that brought the Jews to the death camps. And when he was asked afterward, you know, "Why would you do such a thing?", his excuse was, "I didn't know what was being transported on these railroad lines." So, I want to let you know that even though you may not be the ones fracking in our land, you are responsible, and you don't have that excuse. I also want to say... What do I want to say? I want to say so many things. I want to speak to this idea that there's a lot of hysteria going on. What I really see is actually there's not a lot of hysteria. There's 10 times the amount of plastic in our oceans than plankton. People's water is lighting on fire from fracking. Why aren't we more upset, you know? And I also want to say, until, this is kind of funny, maybe it's a little inappropriate. I apologize for that. A friend of mine proposed this idea. If all corporate executives were willing to attach, these are the men, were willing to attach radio-controlled cigar cutters to their genitals, and when they said, "We promise your water will not be poisoned when we frac. We promise your land won't be destroyed." If they were willing to make that sacrifice and say, "This will not happen to your land," then I'd say, "Okay." But until corporate executives are willing to do that, I'm not willing to risk my land. I'm not willing to risk my water, and I'm not willing to risk the future of life on this planet. So... Also, you know, oh yeah, Stan said, he looks forward to the very well-informed presentations. Well, I'm a very skilled translator, and usually what that means when a corporate executive says, you know, it's lies. So, I'm tired of experts. We all know in our hearts what's going on. I know it's not easy. This whole civilization is making it so it makes sense financially to support corporations in exploiting our land. And I understand, and I have compassion that it's difficulty, but future generations aren't going to care that you took some money, and it made sense, and you were able to donate it for your community organization, or you were able to buy your kids a good college education. They're going to care whether they can eat the food and breathe the air and drink the water. And I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Pamela Gear.
Good evening. My name's Pam Gear. I live at 5,000 Butte in northeast Boulder. And thanks for this opportunity, and I particularly want to thank everyone who has already shared this morning and the people who will, this evening, and the people who will share later. It's great to have this opportunity for us to talk to you, but I think even more for us to hear each other. So, I very much appreciate that. And there was a lot said. I agree, it's past my bedtime as well. And I agree, there's a lot of information here, and I go back and forth in my own mind in terms of, it's not what we need, more information. We need transformation. I mean, we need a bit of reformation. But I think, too, there's like, you know, the snowflake principle, you know? You don't know which one, you know, feathery, weightless snowflake is going to be the one that makes the branch just, you know, give. But anyway, I so appreciate hearing this stuff. I hadn't heard this stuff about earthquakes. I hadn't heard all those details. And the mayor in Texas having to abandon, a mayoral decision to abandon one's town. I mean, anyway. So, a lot of the facts people have mentioned, I want to mostly echo the lady who was up early on, who said, "Can't we take our time with something of this magnitude?" You know? You know, more is coming down pretty much every day, you know? It was only four and a half months ago that France banned fracking. That's a nation, a country that's banned this process within their entire nation-state. And it was less than a week ago, all of this stuff was released, the preliminary findings for EPA's thing that's due in fourteen in Pavilion. You know, people for nearly a decade had been bringing their evidence forward, and EPA said, "We need to go out and create our own evidence." And now that they have, you know, as of last week, they say, "Okay, alarming levels of contaminants, carcinogenic contaminants, contaminants that we know are common fracking compounds." So there's just more constantly. This morning, I was just looking at some stuff online before going to work, and I actually, when I made a Bakari, I don't always type right, so I'm typing in. I was trying to type in contaminated aquifer in Wyoming, contaminated Wyoming aquifer, something like that. And I look up at the screen, and then instead I've Googled contaminated Longmont aquifer, 'cause I had the media on my mind and stuff. And just looking at that phrase in the little box, contaminated Longmont aquifer, you know, it's one of those things that, it was like, you'd have to see it to have the effect, I think. But anyway, anyway, sorry, I'm getting off track there. But in any event, when I was looking at stuff this morning, there's certainly new stuff to me every day. Things, and things that a body like the council and that the city, I think, wants to know about.
Thank you. Thank you, Pam. Next, Lynn Segal.
Lynn Segal, five-thirty-eight Dewey. In Colorado, we're fracking because we're selling out of state, just like we're selling out of country, all of our non-fracked gas. So it's not really necessary in the first place. I heard that you're getting money for water, and they need the water rights to be able to frac. So that's certainly a means that you can get them not to frac. The money that you're spending for the water, you better well consider the money that it'll cost to clean up water potentially that results from, from the fracking, the, you know, the harm to the water supply. Have y'all heard of life cycle analysis, embodied energy? Okay. These are, these are things that I learned about a long time ago, and I think that you oughta Google them sometime. But when you're considering trade-offs, return on investment, you know, what you're gonna get by selling, you know, "We could sell this water, we could make money." Embodied energy and life cycle analysis costs are the overall costs of everything, the drilling, the, everything that goes into it, the labor of the people that are working on it, and their healthcare costs for ergonomic injuries, for, for air pollution, any kind of externalities. Have you heard the term externalities? Another good thing to look up. Reducing the demand, like, for example, in this building, just where I was sitting, it felt like windstorms like we've been having lately here. I don't think you'd need to be using the electricity to blow air around here a lot if these buildings were built with insulation going into the ground, below frost line, on the whole footprint of the, of the building, and then insulating it really well. And that will be the future of how we design to lower our gas demands, because gas is used mostly for heating equally, I mean, for heating, or for cooking. So if we can reduce the need for it to start with, also.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, also using solar and, and wind, and filling in.
Next up, sorry.
In between with gas.
Next up is Nancy Hall.
Yeah. Lower, it lowers our, further our demand for gas.
Yeah, we only get three minutes, or we'll be here. Next up is Nancy Hall.
Hi, my name is Nancy Hall, and I reside at one-two-eight-nine-two Sherrandy Street, which is very close to the city of Longmont, technically in Boulder County. But I submit that I'm potentially an affected person, my husband and I, because I think that everyone is uphill in the event of seismic activity. And we don't know, of course, what kind of seismic activity we might have with this, but there's a potential. And as for the people who submit that, that there are no dangers, or they're not worried about the dangers of fracking, I would say, and for those who say that there's mass hysteria about the subject, I would say that it's not hysteria to question technology before you accept it. I would say it's an abrogation of our responsibility not to question technology before we accept it. But anyway, I've been thinking about all these things as people have been talking here, and wondering why we're doing this. We don't need it. We are exporting our gas, and it's been shown, Robert, Professor Robert Hoarth of Cornell has shown that use of natural gas is in fact dirtier than the use of coal and oil when you consider the entire life cycle analysis, and you consider the methane that's, that's released into the atmosphere because of the fracking. It's not a good technology. We don't have any need for it. So the only thing I can think of is what we've all been told to do, and that's follow the money. And so if it boils down to money, I have to ask a couple of questions. You've heard some of this before. But where are the jobs gonna be after the disaster? Where is the tax revenue gonna come from after our property values have all dropped? You know, we do have to look at the long-term consequences. It seems that the powers that be at the federal and state level can't act fast enough in order to take preventive measures for this sort of thing. Right now, there are no regulations, as far as I can tell, that give us any ability to take preventive action. So it seems to me that we have to start at the grassroots level, we have to start at the local level. And we at the local level can be the beginning of the action that says, "For whatever reason, we do not want this. Let's take a stance on this at the local level, please." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Nancy Hall. Oh, did I, did I miss Virginia Blackton? Yeah, sorry. I apologize.
I thought maybe I'd been written off since I'm a newcomer, but you would not have known that. So my name is Virginia Black. I live at two-six-oh-nine Elhurst Circle. I just moved to Longmont a year ago, and from New York City. I love it here. I am a biologist by training. I'm not hysterical, but I am concerned about the effect of the fracking chemicals on the environment and on wildlife, including people. Essentially, essential to understanding the potential damage that can be done by fracking is specific knowledge of the chemicals that are involved. A recent panel recommended that corporations report fluids used in fracking, one, if problems arise, and two, after the drilling is done. While these are in the right direction, both of these recommendations are essentially useless because the damage has already been done. Some of the fluids in the contents of fracking that have been published are ones which I was not allowed to dispose of in the sink of my laboratory, nor was I allowed to evaporate them off in the chemical hood because of concerns about their toxicity and contamination of air and water. So I would strongly urge the council, Parks and Recreation, whoever is responsible for the final decisions, not to allow fracking to occur in Longmont until the possible damage that can be done to our air, water, wildlife, including people, can be appropriately assessed and appropriate regulations put in place. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Virginia. Next up, Jams Hollowell.
Hi. I'm Janice Hollowell. I live at eighty-four-twenty North Thirty-Ninth Street in Boulder County. And I'm just wanting to add my voice, what's left of it, to the many voices that have spoken here tonight. And I know you're all really tired. We're all really tired. It's a long haul. But thank you for bearing with us because it's an important issue. And I, what I'm, I'm not gonna repeat too much of what other people have said, because you've heard it. But I would like to say that what I'm getting out of this group here is that people are repeating to you a couple of things. With the exception of the people that don't believe in carcinogens and the people that don't believe in neurotoxins, the rest of us are sort of saying to you, "Look, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So wait, have them wait. Say to these corporations, "No, no, big guy, back down, you know? We're not into this right now. We need to know more. We need to know, first of all, why you aren't even telling us what these chemicals are." You know, people are saying that it's safe. Well, reports are coming out. I'm hearing stuff on NPR, I'm reading stuff in the New York Times. I'm hearing stuff from, in, in, in daily papers about these municipalities and communities around the country, around the globe, that are backing off, they're trying to reverse their decision. They're saying, "No, this is turning out to be a bad thing for us to do." So I'd like to say to my new home of Longmont, I've lived in Boulder County for, you know, forty years, but Longmont area only the last year, I'd like to say, "Let's be smart. Ask for, ask for all of the, all of the evidence. Look at it all before you make a move. Time is on our side. Just, just hang in. The jury's not in yet on, on, on what this can do, but the circumstantial kind of evidence is really kind of there. We're seeing people saying, 'We really wish we hadn't done this in our community.' And so I hope that we don't do it anymore in our community. It doesn't stay in Union Reservoir. There is groundwater. It goes from there. It's also the thin edge of the wedge. If we start fracking right in Boulder, I'm sorry, right in Longmont City, we're gonna be wanting to frac all over the county. And it's just really a dangerous thing to entertain. It really is. So thank you for bearing with us. I know it's boring to listen to us all. We're not all public speakers. We are just human beings who are concerned. And actually, most of the farmers were at the GMO meeting, or you would've had twice as many people.
Thank you very much, Janice. Next, Andrew Rose, followed by Bob Norris. Andrew Rose here? Okay, I guess we'll move on to Bob Norris.
Hi, I'm Bob Norris, five-thirty-two Ryder Ridge Drive. I didn't move in Longmont. I don't always admit this to people, but I have a PhD in organic chemistry. And maybe worse, there's two hydraulic fracturing patents with my name on it from nineteen-eighty. I do tell people, I've been an environmental consultant for thirty years. I was one of a handful of people that started the industry that cleans up groundwater and soils from spills of gas stations and chemical plants and stuff. So I have kind of a perspective about some of these chemicals. We always had to look and model toxicity of a compound, exposure, how much a person might intake or be exposed to. And we had to do that not only for the chemicals that were in the ground, but we had to do that with any chemicals that were used in doing the remediation. And of course, you can't do that if you don't know what the chemicals are, let alone what the toxicity is. You know, Texas requires fracking companies to provide that information. And there's at least one fracking company in Colorado that voluntarily provides it. So I think that these companies say that the materials aren't toxic or hazardous, then tell us what they are. I don't really think that what one company's using is that much differently proprietary than another one. And I've looked at some scientific journals, and I know this from when I, my work, that even when fractures are primarily horizontal, there are some vertical. So there is always some potential, and it'll vary from place to place for communication up as well as out. And I know there's two wells out there by Union Reservoir, and I don't know how long they've been there, and I don't know how carefully they were cemented. So it's, if you're gonna frac out there, you're gonna communicate, reach out to those wells. And if they have a problem in the completion in those wells, then we're gonna have a problem in our groundwater. And that needs to be determined ahead of time. I'd also like to suggest that the fracking companies post a bond or insurance to cover all the potential costs. And if it's such a low probability, it should be pretty cheap to get that insurance. I would also like to suggest that the management of those companies live in a trailer three-hundred-and-fifty feet from the fracking wells for the six months that it takes. I'm not trying to be funny, but I'm just trying to say, let's, everybody feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Muzelta, M-U-E-Z-E-L-T-A, and no last name. All right, then we'll move on to the last speaker, is Jeff Thompson?
Jeff Thompson, sixteen-sixteen Summer Street. Mayor Coombs, I don't know anything really about your politics. All I know is that you campaigned, and I heard this all, all the time, and on all the signs and everything, that you wanna be a mayor for all the people. So how about it? Let's hear it. Do you wanna fight this for all the people?
It's not appropriate to answer right now this forum.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I get that from all the mayors. I've been coming, I've been coming to the city council meetings for about ten years now on various issues. And so I kind of know the way it works in this town. And every time somebody comes to Longmont to make a quick buck at the expense of the people of Longmont, our city manager takes the side of the quick buck artist. And you can see that very clearly, the way he set up this meeting tonight, because all of the information is one-sided, and he hasn't told you diddly about the problem of fracking. And, and I've heard everything that's been said tonight, and the people still don't realize what a problem this fracking is. And another thing that they wanna convey is the impression, and city councils and commissions, and they always try to say, "There's nothing we can do." Well, I've been doing some research, I'm an attorney, and I don't get tired after one hour. We can fight every single application for the site, for the sighting of a well pad, and every application for a drill permit. We can, we can, we're entitled to notice and a hearing on every single thing that the Oil and Gas Commission does. And they are required by laws to have regulations to protect wildlife and wildlife habitat, and streams, and bodies of waters, and wetlands, and this sort of thing. And if they're not protecting our land, we can get their decisions reviewed in court. And the other thing is that our, we can do a lot with our land use code. Our land use code hasn't, for this area, for this type of activity, hasn't been updated since fracking, since we have this modern-day fracking. And that's, that's absolutely unacceptable. And you should find out from city manager Gordon Pedro why he didn't come to you at least four years ago when the city leased. We, the company that supplies most of the water for fracking in this Wattenberg Field is A&amp;W Water, and Longmont is leasing six-hundred acre-feet of water to them that comes out of the Colorado River, and we're destroying the Colorado River for this fracking. And find out why Gordon Pedro isn't doing his job and saying we should update those regulations.
I think we're going to take a short break, a five-minute break before we resume. So everybody's fine with that. Maybe get a ten-minute break. Yeah, water would be great.
Water?
Yeah.
I think the ice water is almost fun again.
Yeah, yeah. All right. We'll bring the meeting back order. I have to apologize to Ann Kibbe. I somehow inadvertently missed her. So we're going to bring back the public invited to be heard for Ann. Please state your name and address, please.
Thank you. Ann Kibbe, three-one-four-two Captain's Lane. I've lived in Longmont for four years, and I was just beginning to enjoy having paid off my house when this whole issue of fracking came up. And even though I'm on the opposite side of Longmont, I think there are issues here for everybody in Longmont. And I wanted to say a couple of things about the air pollution problem that I think has been underestimated. And I will leave this material with your person there. In Wyoming, in the upper Green River Basin, people are complaining about health problems, and the ozone levels there are now higher than they are in Los Angeles. On the worst day in Los Angeles is not as bad as the worst days in Wyoming, in relatively rural area, but where there is a lot of fracking. That was reported two thousand and eleven. I also, the Hoar study has been referenced a couple of times. And I want just to give you the gist of that. This is a study done by professors at Cornell University. And this report came out in April two thousand and eleven. And I just wanted to read a few sentences from it. "While natural gas has been touted as a clean burning fuel that produces less carbon dioxide than coal, ecologist Robert Hoarth warns that we should be more concerned about methane leaking into the atmosphere during hydraulic fracturing. Natural gas is mostly methane, which is a much more potent greenhouse gas, especially in the short term, with one hundred and five times more warming impact, pound for pound, than carbon dioxide." Hoarth said that even small leaks make a big difference, that is, small methane leaks. He estimated that as much as eight percent of the methane and shale gas leaks into the air during the lifetime of a hydraulic shale gas well. And this, he says, this is the first study that's been done of the methane that is released in the process of hydraulic fracking. And that data from conventional natural gas wells cannot be used to understand what the impacts of fracking will be, because the methane release is much higher. And it comes about through the process that's used, that eight percent of that is going to leak into the atmosphere. And finally, I wanted to leave with you a DVD of a documentary film called "A Land Out of Time." And this was made by people in western Colorado. Also includes people from Montana and New Mexico.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
In your position towards deciding.
Thank you, Ann. Okay, now we're going to move on to our study sessions. The city manager will introduce the first item.
Mayor and council, and as I do that, I would like to give you some options. I know that this has been a longer-than-usual opportunity for citizens to speak. We do have two critical items that we needed to introduce tonight. Not only more information about the oil and gas process, which is very complex, but also the proposed changes to our retirement plans for the general employees. We do need to introduce these ordinances so that they get adopted and become effective by January first. So our reason to want to speak about the retirement plan changes tonight was so that you would understand the basic issues prior to introducing the ordinance. The council does have an option that if you would prefer, we could plan to introduce those items on the twenty-ninth and have a more detailed presentation on first reading. Just recognize that it is important that at least some of these ordinances and changes to our pension plans be effective January first, because they are required in order to meet the IRS regulation. So it's up to you as to whether or not you want a fairly detailed presentation on this matter tonight, or whether you'd rather have a shorter presentation and then a more detailed presentation when we introduce them on the twenty-ninth.
Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Jim, can you give us a five-minute, ten-minute version?
Mayor Coombs, members of council, actually, if I could maybe correct what Gordon said. I can't give a shorter presentation on this. But we can defer the presentation till the night that we introduce the ordinance. I don't think I could give you the information within ten minutes. You do have the information in the communication, though. And I just wanted to make sure you were aware of it before we introduced the ordinance, in case you needed to give us some other direction. They're two separate ordinances. The important thing is that we pass the one on the technical amendment changes, and that's not even going to be discussed tonight, anyway. This was about the benefit changes. And if we had to delay those past the first of the year, we prefer it to be, you know, a good cutoff for the first of the year, though. That's why we want to introduce it on the twenty-ninth.
Reading it, I didn't see any thing that is out of the ordinary. The presentations you always give are always insightful, but the communication was actually fine. And, you know, I would move that we just direct staff and bring forward the ordinance with the proposed plan amendments. Second.
Okay, I guess all in favor, let's vote. Okay, we'll move this to the twenty-ninth of November.
And Mayor, we would say, if council members, if you're looking through this information between now and then, if you'd pass those questions to us so that we're in the very best position to answer everything on the twenty-ninth, that would be most helpful.
All right, thank you.
So then the next item has to do with the general information on the oil and gas development and operations. And this was intended to be a fairly broad brush tonight to give council a lot of information about several complex elements of this. And we do have a number of people who are going to speak to bring you information. And when we're through with that, we would be looking for a direction as to where you might want additional information or any other direction you want to give us. And Dale Rademacher will start the presentation.
Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Dale Rademacher, the Director of Public Works and Natural Resources. And I'm here this evening to provide you some information on oil and gas operations on city property and within city limits. Obviously, you've heard a couple of hours of testimony and information from the public. And I'd like to talk with you a little bit about some of the things that I hope to go over in the presentation this evening. The first and important issue is that this is really a presentation and a discussion of the issues. We're not asking council to take any specific action tonight, but rather to have the opportunity that you requested at your joint meeting with the Weld County Commissioners, that we would come back and provide you with additional information on the broad issue. We are going to generally focus our discussion on the city properties out in Weld County, as that is the area that is having the greatest interest with regard as that is the area that is having the greatest interest with regards to potential oil and gas exploration. We're gonna brief you on the status of the mineral interests and leases on the various city properties that you have a general understanding of what those are. We're gonna provide you with some of the experiences with oil and gas operations on city properties. We're gonna look at the idea of a consolidated drill location. What are the pros and cons of that? And why would that be of the interest of the city and/or the producer? Same situation on the issue of seismic surveys on city property. Again, what are the pros and cons of that? And why would that be something we'd wanna look at or not? We're also gonna ask our planning staff to give you a briefing on the city's land use code and also talk about how Longmont's land use code compares with some other agencies around us. We're also gonna have presentation from our special legal counsel that's going to brief us a little bit with regards to the legal aspects of the city's rights as property owner, the city's rights as a municipality, the city's rights as a leaseholder or a mineral owner. We also have representatives from the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission here this evening to speak with you about their role and responsibilities in the oil and gas industry. And then finally, we have a presentation from the representative from the Oil and Gas Association. And so, the individuals that will be speaking tonight on behalf of the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission is Debbie Baldwin, who is the engineering manager, environmental manager in the commission. Janet, excuse me, Phil Barber is our special counsel, who will be coming up to talk as well. Tricia Schuler is the representative and the CEO of the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation, or excuse me, Gas Association. We also have in the audience tonight Tom Parco, who is the Weld County Planning Manager, who, as you heard when you had your joint meeting with Weld County, have some experience with regards to oil and gas exploration. And then, we also have Janice Wisman, who is the Conservation Easement Program Manager for Olver County Parks and Open Space. And they're here to answer questions if council has specific questions on their policies and procedures. And so, quickly, and this information was in your packet as well, the gas field and oil field that we're looking at is the Wattenberg Field. This slide essentially shows the Wattenberg Field and the proximity to Longmont. There are over 17,000 producing wells in the Wattenberg Field as of now. It has produced several trillion cubic feet of natural gas and several million barrels of oil. I think the article in the Denver Post this morning of the potential that there might be upwards of a billion barrels of oil or more in the field probably reflects that this is one of the larger producing fields in the nation and has been in production since the early 1970s. With regard to city properties, this particular drawing demonstrates and shows city ownership of land by the fund that owns it. And so, the properties in green are those properties that have been acquired by the Open Space Fund. The property shown in blue are the properties that have been purchased by the Water Fund, predominantly for the future expansion of Union Reservoir. The property in purple has been purchased by the Storm Drainage Fund along the drainage way. And the properties that are pink in color are properties that are owned by the General Fund or the Park Fund. And those would be Sandstone Ranch and the High Plains Preserve, which was the old city landfill. We've, also on that particular slide, we give you the rough acreage that each of the funds have purchased out in Weld County. And so, different from that is the status of the mineral rights underneath those lands. And it does vary by property. So, again, on this one going through the colors, on this particular one, the green colors is the properties that the city owns, the mineral rights, and that there is a current oil and gas lease on the property. And so, that includes the properties to the east of the reservoir. It includes several of the properties also on the west side of the reservoir. It includes Sandstone Ranch and the High Plains Preserve, or the old landfill property. The properties that are in, I would call brown, are properties that the city owns the mineral rights and they are not currently leased. There is not currently a lease on those. And as I mentioned in the communication, the whole issue of whether, or when, or if the city ever chooses to lease properties that it owns is a future discussion. It's not something that we are researched or ready to bring forward for you at this point. The properties in pink are important to understand as well because that is a situation where the city owns the surface rights, but we don't own the mineral rights. But they are leased. And so, that includes a lot of the Sherwood property on the southern end. Includes the Boulder Creek Estates and includes the Distel property as well. And there are a couple of properties that are shown in blue. And those are the ones that we're still researching, the final status of the mineral ownership on those. So, the issue of consolidated drill sites in general. And again, I don't wanna go into the specifics on any one particular site, but rather in general. Why is that something that is being considered not just here in Longmont, but throughout the Wattenberg Field? The top part of this drawing, again, is to be a concept of the idea of drills that could potentially be, or excuse me, wells that could potentially be drilled in that particular section of ground. And with the area below sort of indicating the idea that if you consolidate those well sites from a surface owner perspective, it does not, it prevents the dispersion of those wells throughout your property. In a sense, they consolidate them down. That's why they're called a consolidated site. So, that was generally why that would be in the interest of a surface owner, whether you're a farmer or the city of Longmont. From an operator's viewpoint, it probably also makes sense in that they consolidate their operations and they don't have them dispersed so they're not having to run pipelines to all the different wells in a dispersed fashion around the property. There are, and that's one of the basic issues of why we either would or wouldn't wanna go towards trying to consolidate these well sites on city property. So, when we talk about a consolidated drill site, what are we talking about? So, this is a picture of an actual site out on Weld County Route 9, due east of the city, about three or four miles. This is a site that has about eight wells on it. And so, what you're looking at here are the separators that separate the oil and gas. And this is a picture of the tank battery, and they're sitting right next to each other on this site. This is about a two-acre, two-to-three-acre site that they're sitting on, which is roughly the size that we are trying to look at for a consolidated site on city property. And so, if council is interested in ever seeing those, we are also working to try to set up tours where you might be able to go out to those sites if you're actually interested in doing that going forward. The second issue that I just wanna briefly touch on is this issue of seismic surveys on city properties. Again, this is an issue that may come forward to you in the future. And so, this is a request that may come forward in the form of a permit to enter onto city property for the purposes of doing a seismic survey in order to better map and understand the geology below the surface. City staff yesterday took a road trip out to the Pontybutz area. It was quite a drive. But what we went to actually see what was going on. And when we say doing a seismic survey, what does that look like? So, this is a photograph of the equipment that is brought in. And essentially, what it does is it introduces vibrations into the ground that send that vibration in. Those vibrations are then picked up with hydrophones that are laid out on cables across the property. And they pick up the information. And so, it's a mapping exercise. It's very large in nature. This is over many tens or hundreds of square miles. This particular site is on probably around 10 square miles that they're working on. They do about a square mile a day or more. The city has about 1,000 acres of property, so that would be a couple of days that they would actually be doing it. It's obviously a longer time to set up and actually do the test. The issue that we will ultimately bring forward for consideration is whether or not we believe that's in the interest of Longmont to allow that permit. You do have discretion on that, very much so. You can approve it, you can modify it. In other words, you can condition it. Some things that you can condition on are things like the type of equipment that you want to allow on the city property, if any. You might also designate that it's walk-in only to lay the cables. Obviously, the issue of sending the signals in, they have to be able to find places where they can actually induce the signals. So, there are more work and research that we will do on that before that comes forward to you. But I did wanna let you know that that is an issue that's also out there. And so, if there's no questions, or if there are questions for anything that I presented to you, I can answer those. Otherwise, I would like to have Brad Skoll come up and talk with you about the city's current land use codes dealing with the regulation and permitting of oil and gas operations.
Councilman Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. As we heard from speakers earlier, one of the questions that they asked is what if the city were to buy back those leases where we own the mineral rights already? What would the cost of the city be if we were gonna do that?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Samori, the quick answer is I don't know. But I would suspect it is, could be upwards of hundreds of thousands, if not into the millions of dollars to buy back the leases simply because of the production levels that are being realized in existing wells, even in this far western part of Weld County. I honestly have not, you would wanna praise that, but it would be a pricey proposition. And frankly, you have to also, I think, have a willing seller, willing buyer, and also you're willing to use eminent domain or some other way of acquiring it.
And could you get us, when you come back next time, could you bring us some estimate?
Range of those costs?
Yeah, range of those costs.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor, I didn't miss, I might have missed what he said, but did he also indicate that we had to have a source of revenue to actually buy any property interest that we maybe might? If not, that would be the other part of the equation. Thank you.
Evening, Mayor Coombs, members of the city council. Welcome to the new council members. My name is Brad Skoll, Planning Manager for the city of Longmont. I'd like to talk to you a little bit tonight about the city's regulatory role with respect to oil and gas exploration and those types of associated activities. Dale has talked to you a little bit about owners of mineral estates, surface ownership rights. Right now, the next couple of minutes, we'll be talking about the regulatory or the land use authority in which the city regulates oil and gas operations. And immediately following me is gonna be Phil Barber. Phil? Oh, my goodness, he's right here. And he's going to supplement my remarks with respect to the city of Longmont's land use authority in this particular area to control oil and gas regulations. Presently, oil and gas operations are considered conditional use permits in all zone districts in the city of Longmont. What that means is that there are a set of review criteria which an application will be compared against that will be reviewed at a public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission. An application for a conditional use permit gets filed with the city. Then there is a period or notification area of 750-foot radius. Typically, what we do is we'll look at the geography of that radius and expand it where it's appropriate to catch properties that might have some interest in this particular application. There has been a neighborhood meeting held for a couple of the proposed well sites near Union Reservoir. However, an application has not yet been filed with the city of Longmont. So, the application process has not yet started. When one gets on file, the notice goes out and we'll make sure to notify adjacent neighborhood groups as well, including the city council. The Planning and Zoning Commission process is a quasi-judicial action. And that is a decision-making process in which their decision is final unless otherwise appealed. And appeals can come from pretty much anybody who is an aggrieved party or a citizen of Longmont. The definition of standing and of aggrieved party is pretty broad. So, an appeal to the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision on a quasi-judicial matter is not uncommon. And there are rules of procedure then if that matter comes to the city council that the city attorney's office will advise you with respect to outside conversations and ex parte contact. Some of the things that are the conditional use review criteria that are evaluated with each application include the site location. They include some of the general aesthetics around the well area, colors of the equipment, screening, topography, elevation of the equipment. In addition to that, the access routes are evaluated. And there's not a whole lot more, really, that happens with that. It tends to be a, and I'd like, if Phil will elaborate on this a little bit, it tends to be a performative review on the part of the city because the Oil and Gas Commission rules and case law do provide that there are preemptions with respect to local land use authority on yes-no decisions with respect to drilling if the permit requirements are met at the state. That being said, Longmont does administer its land use code with conditional uses with the aim to work as cooperatively as possible with the property owner. And in the event that there are issues or problems, then it's the province of the Planning and Zoning Commission to take a look at those and their consideration with respect to their decision-making. So, that's the short version on land use regulations on oil and gas for Longmont. Maybe I'll just do a quick look for Tom and Janice. Is there a lot different in Boulder Weld County? Some, yeah. Some with Tom in that they have building permits and some additional regulations, although they have much greater activity in terms of oil and gas regulations than Longmont does.
Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I don't know about the other members of council, but I'd like to see what Weld County and Boulder County, what their regulations, you know, a simplistic description. You know, not the, I'm sorry, to the attorneys, the legalese jargon that can befuddle anyone, but a side-by-side comparison of what, this is what Weld County does, this is what Boulder County does. So, I think that'd be beneficial for us to see.
And we'll put Longmont in that matrix, too, so you see where things stand.
Councilmember Witt?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Also, I'm interested in finding out how long the wells, particularly in Boulder County, I think a lot of people would be kind of surprised to realize Boulder County does have active wells at this time. And I would like to know how long they've been active and any incidences that have happened in Boulder County.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess an interesting aspect would also be to see if you can locate a county or a jurisdiction with the most relaxed or least ordinance, restrictive ordinances, and the one in the state with the most restrictive or the most regulation, just so that we have a basis of comparison. If there's a bunch of stuff smack in between, I'd like to know what the edges of the universe look like.
Well, if I'm lucky, some of our upcoming speakers are gonna be able to address that.
Thank you.
Don't see any more questions? So I guess next speaker's up.
Whoa, Dennis. Even my mic's in the...
Oh, excuse me. Sorry, sorry. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I actually have, I just wanted to get on the record, I would like to hear answered. There are some, there are a couple questions that were raised earlier I would like to hear the answer to at some point, and then follow it up with, once we have the information, once, let me just, number one, has the city conducted an economic study on how fracking would impact property values? I'm all for property rights, subsurface and above-surface. So how would subsurface mineral rights and what we've heard about tonight, impact property owners like the Siemens? What are the impacts directly, and how can it be mitigated? Those include chemicals, wastewater, the possibility of getting indemnification insurance contracts for if a spill occurs. Where does the water come from? That's a lot of water. I'd like to know just where does it come from, who pays for it? Are there city ordinances that affect things like noise, lights, and odor? I'd like to know, do we have the authority to issue a moratorium, and what would that look like? I'd like to know, and then in the event that all of that is just like the earth is ending, it's like the beginning of Superman, you know, when Superman's dad's saying the world will explode if we continue to do this, I'm just curious, in the event that council comes down absolutely adamant, vehemently opposed to fracking, what could Top Operating Inc. and other oil companies do? Because I know that we've flagpole annexed certain sections around Union Reservoir. I mean, how hard is it to move the drill pad from Longmont, a couple hundred yards over to Weld County? I'd also like to know, of the tens of thousands of wells, I'm curious, how many are currently being fracked? All of them? Okay, so that answers one question. So in short, I guess I'd, I mean, I just want to know, I want information on what's going on, so then we can see, okay, well, how bad is it, and then what can we do about it? Thank you, Mayor Coombs.
Thank you, Councilmember Bagley. Seeing no other questions?
Mayor, if we're prepared to resume the presentation, Phil Barber is going to be next. I would make a point that I think Councilman Bagley exceeded 10 questions in that timeframe.
He was taking vigorous notes.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm used to saying, may it please the court, but I'll say, may it please the council. My name is Phil Barber. My practice is primarily related to representing landowners, mineral owners, some oil and gas companies, so I have a smattering of clients in many of the different aspects of oil and gas development. I don't know that I'm known as being particularly for the oil companies, against the oil companies, but I represent a lot of different interests in the oil and gas business and have for about 30 years. I'm just going to give you, again, a high-level, very basic outline of some of the things that go into consideration when you're dealing with issues like you're dealing with here tonight. And let me just say that this is the kind of meeting that's going on throughout the state right now. La Plata County, Arapahoe County, Elbert County, I don't know what Boulder County's doing, but Douglas County, El Paso County, all of the counties in the line of this Niobrara oil and gas development are doing the same things you're doing here and hearing the same kinds of questions being raised. Just on a conceptual level of how the laws work in a very general way, the state of Colorado has authorized the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission to regulate some of the basic aspects of oil and gas development. And the way the state laws work compared to your laws, and I don't mean to talk down to anybody, so if this is too basic, you'll just hold up your hand and say, move on, but if the state has a law, then in general, a municipality or a county cannot pass a law which contravenes the state law. The Oil and Gas Conservation Commission has certain laws, or has certain regulations, which it has developed as a result of being authorized to regulate oil and gas operations, drilling, reclamation, and all of that sort of thing, that are on the books. And the court cases suggest that municipalities have very limited authority where the Oil and Gas Commission has spoken and has adopted a specific regulation to be able to countermand those regulations. So you sort of think first, what has the state done? If the state has done something, then you all are in some ways prohibited from stepping on the state's toes. And one of the examples, especially since we have somebody from Weld County here, there was a situation probably about 10 years ago where Greeley enacted a complete ban on drilling within Greeley. And they basically, even if you had a permit as an oil company from the Oil and Gas Commission and were given the right by the commission to come and drill a well, the city of Greeley wanted to basically take that right away. Case went all the way up to the Supreme Court of Colorado, and the Colorado Supreme Court said, the Oil and Gas Commission grants permits, counties, municipalities do not have the authority to take those permits away. That's just what the law is, whether you like it or not. I think that's probably a pretty accurate statement of where things stand on who can issue a permit. Now, there are a lot of other areas, because you can imagine, let's just think about, the state of Colorado has a whole set of laws, not just for oil and gas, but for every, for a lot of different activities that people touch every day. But the state of Colorado isn't the only entity that has laws. You all have laws too. So to the extent the state hasn't spoken, you all have the right to enact regulations to regulate, you know, to probably not prohibit if it's talking about the right to drill, but to add conditions, prohibitions, safety and security issues that come up, visual impact issues come up. And really, it's a sort of a case-by-case, rule-by-rule analysis that I think you have to engage in. Is there a state rule that deals with this? If not, then you all may want to do something about it. Even if there is a state rule, you may be able to regulate on the fringes of that. So that's just sort of a very general overview of how the state power versus the municipal power operates. So you, as a municipality, do have certain powers, and as I said, a lot of counties along the front range are developing and redeveloping their municipal codes to deal with this flood of oil and gas development that's occurring, because obviously, many citizens are affected and a lot of citizens are concerned. As I said, El Paso is right in the midst of that. La Plata has developed its rules, and there was a question about doing a side-by-side comparison. That's easily done. I mean, there are, these are all on the internet. People in the audience could pick them up too if they wanted to. I think that there was some discussion, maybe just to mention, I think El Paso County has imposed a moratorium, a temporary moratorium, on issuing special use permits, to the extent that they are requiring special use permits. So this is all developing very rapidly right now. So that's just on a, what I'll call a regulatory basis. But the city really stands in a very interesting position here, because not only do you have the police power to regulate, you are a property owner. Just like, if I owned a piece of land, I have the right to decide whether to lease that property or not. So to the extent that the city owns property that is unleased, you have the absolute right to decide whether to lease that property or not. If you decide not to lease it, then in general, it makes it very difficult for an oil company to drill on it, just being very candid about that. If you own property where you just own the surface, but not the minerals, the city has the right to require, even though it doesn't own the minerals, the oil company to follow certain standards, act as a reasonable and prudent operator, and engage in practices which are safe and as, what should I say, non-polluting as possible. You also have property where you are the mineral owner, that you've already leased. So you're basically stuck with a lease, and the oil company, somebody like Top, I don't know the specifics, may say, we have a lease, we want to do X, Y, and Z on your property. And that's probably where the issues of consolidated drill pads have come up. Because if you look at this map up here, in the absence of consolidated drill pads, the state allows an oil company that has a lease to drill up to seven or eight wells in every 160-acre location. I'll take that back. That's right, at every 160 acres, they could probably drill eight to 10 wells. So by consolidating, obviously, you save some disturbance of the surface. And there's been a lot of discussion about fracking here. I think one of the things that this council would want to consider is, there's a lot of surface disturbance that goes on with oil and gas drilling. There are roads, there are pipelines, there are tanks, there are drill sites, there are pads. So the subsurface is one issue, but what happens on the surface is also something, as a landowner, you would want to be concerned with. I can tell you that I've been engaged, to varying extents, to try to develop what we call a surface use agreement. So where the city either owns the minerals and has them leased, or is contemplating leasing the minerals, or owns the surface rights only, that there is sort of a, that there is a document that the oil company is required to sign and abide by, and the city would be required to sign and abide by, that would assign responsibilities, obligations, and duties of the party who's using the surface, so the oil company. So you have, as a surface owner, as a mineral owner, as a municipality, a number of different areas where you can impact oil and gas development if you choose to. The cases, as I say, are very, there aren't too many. And it looks like I'm starting to run out of time, so I'll just be quick here. There aren't too many cases that say exactly what you can and cannot do. We know you can't probably ban drilling, but you can regulate drilling. And Brewfield is doing that right now, in some of the drilling that's occurring up there. So, you know, to the extent you want to go out and look at what other cities are doing, it's probably a good idea. I think that's probably touched on all the things that I was going to touch on. I don't know if there are any questions, or if I've answered the kinds of things that were on your mind, but I'm happy to try to answer questions. Keeping in mind, I don't know that it's a good idea to say, Mr. Barber, will you tell me, can we do this very thing? Because you're asking for a legal opinion at that point, and I think that puts me in an awkward position of trying to give counsel to you all, without really analyzing everything that might be, need to be analyzed before I could give you that answer. So if I duck a question, you'll know why.
All right. Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. What I'd like to see is an example of a surface use agreement, if that's possible.
We have actually developed one. It's not done, but it's in the works. You can see one?
If you can see one, and see, you know, if there are other counties and municipalities that have these as well, to see what the differences are. Just a little, again, just a little comparison between what this city or town does compared to what this city or town does, or county.
And you also would throw Farmer Jones in that lot too, because as a surface owner or a mineral owner, farmers and ranchers have these surface use agreements all the time, because they're just as interested in not having their crops disturbed by oil and gas operations as you all would be in, you know, assuring that your city operates the way you want it to.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Is there case law that defines the boundary between not banning and regulating? Like, for example, okay, so we know we can't ban it in our city limits, and we don't know even if we did and could, what the consequences would be just on the other side of the city property line. But is it possible to ban it in certain locations, i.e. Union Reservoir, or within a certain distance from residential properties? Is there case law that says, here's where the line is, or the edge is?
There's case law of probably not very much. The more important thing that you would want to look at is, the Oil and Gas Commission actually has regulations which ban drilling in certain places. You cannot drill, for instance, closer than 150 feet from a road. You have to be, I think the rule is currently about 350 feet from a house, or a hospital, or, you know, other inhabited places. There's something called a designated outside activity area, which says, basically, you can't drill in a park, in a playground, in places like that. And that's, those are regulations that the commission has developed.
And does city council have authority for the municipality of Longmont to expand on the oil and gas commission's restrictions?
I think that's an open question. That's one of those questions I prefer not to say yes or no, black or white.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Samori?
If I could just back up. Clearly, if the state hasn't spoken, the city council can weigh in. And even if the state has spoken, as long as your regulation is not in direct conflict with what the state has done, the cases seem to indicate that you would be exercising your authority properly.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think this question is either more for Gordon or Dale initially. These properties that we purchased for open space or for the water, when we purchased them, were there pre-existing leases for the minerals, or did we lease them after we purchased them?
Mayor and council, to the best of my knowledge, any leases that exist were in existence before we purchased the property.
Okay, so part of the condition, when we purchased it, we had to live up to the terms of the leases?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, on some of these properties...
May I check with Dale if he knows of any that we've leased after, but I don't believe we've had any leases that we've executed since we purchased.
That would be correct.
Okay. The other question that I have is, on some of these properties that we've purchased, we've re-leased them for agricultural purposes. What rights do the farmers have to the surface? Are they sub, or are they above the leases for minerals?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Samori, our leases that we've entered into with the tenant farmers, I would say do not address or preclude mineral exploration. Those leases are typically a year or two in length, and I don't believe we can enter into a lease that would in any way interfere with the subsurface lease of the property. So that's the best answer I have. I don't, my guess is they're silent with regards to the issue of oil and gas exploration.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions?
Our next speaker's going to be Debbie Baldwin from the Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Baldwin, Environmental Manager for the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, and I wish we had about 24 hours more, because I think there's, lots of good questions have come up, and we certainly just hope this is initiating a process of... come up, and we certainly just hope this is initiating a process of familiarizing you folks with the rules and the laws that the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission enacts, and the rules that we have. And maybe in the future, continue to work and see where the local governments, city government, could work with the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, and how, what kind of a role you can play. Because there are roles that the local governments and county governments can certainly play. So, I'm just going to pass out our staff report that the commission staff publishes monthly, and then the biographical sketches for the commission members, our commission members, just for your information. Okay. An important website that everybody needs to become familiarized with, because I think there are lots of questions, and if you go to our website, the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission, www.colorado.gov.cogcc, you'll have a lot of those, or at least begin to have a resource for answering some of your questions. The mission of the Oil and Gas Commission, the Oil and Gas Commission's been around since 1951, and there's been an evolution of the law that empowers the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. But currently, that mission statement reads that we are required to foster the responsible balanced development and production and the use of oil and gas in the state in a manner that's consistent with protecting public health, safety, welfare, and the environment, and including protections for the environment and wildlife resources. So I'm going to go over some of the ways that we try and make that balancing happen. I think there was a question about how many oil and gas wells there are in the state. There are currently about more than 46,000 active oil and gas wells in the state. And of those 46,000, probably every one, or almost every one of them, has been fracked, fracked not just once, but maybe multiple times. There are also a large number of plugged and abandoned wells, wells that have, where all, the resource has been depleted and they've no longer productive, so they've been plugged. This is a map of the state, and it shows the well permits. So if you own them, or have leased the minerals, and have the right to develop those minerals, you do have to get a permit from the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. It's called an application for a permit to drill Form II. And this map shows with the purple dots, and this is the whole state. This area up here that we're concerned about today is the Wattenberg Field, and so all of those dots represent active permits that have been issued by the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. Another area of a lot of activity is out here in Garfield County and in Rio Blanco County. It's called the Piantz Basin. Down in the southwestern part of the state, La Plata County was mentioned, and that's this area down here. It's the northern end of the San Juan Basin. It's the largest coalbed methane-producing basin in the world. Over here, in the Los Anamos County area, is another coalbed methane area in the state that, and that's in, called the Raton Basin, it's down in Los Anamos County. There's actually quite a bit of activity out here in Yuma County also. So, and then scattered to other places around the state. So, these permits divided, you know, you could just tell by the volume of dots or the density of dots on that map, that this year, most of the well permits, so this is a pie chart that divides up different counties in the state by the number of permits that have been issued by the commission. And Weld County has over 2,000 permits that have been issued. That represents about 50% of the total number of permits issued by the state. In, just even last year, the number of permits issued in Garfield County and Weld County were pretty equal to each other. They were about 35 and 35%. Again, some permits issued in other parts of the state, though. So, but I've heard about these consolidated locations. And one of the technological changes that's occurred, actually really in just the last 10 years, is the ability to drill what are called directional or horizontal wells. And so this chart represents, in the blue, the blue color represents the total number of applications for permits to drill that have been issued. And so you can certainly see since 2,000, the number of permits has increased. Here, we had the highest number ever issued by the state, and that was in response to very high oil and gas prices. But the red line represents the APDs for directional wells, wells that could be drilled from a common well pad. And so you can just see that the number of wells being drilled from common well pads continues to increase, which really does have the benefit of minimizing surface disturbance ultimately for, throughout the area, rather than having every well have to occupy a separate surface location. You can combine these locations into an area, and then drill directionally down to your target formations. And then, and then under the last little, in the last few years, these little green bars represent the number of wells that are being drilled horizontally, or the number of wells drilled horizontally. So again, that's just even an improvement over the directional drilling. So the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission is a division of the Department of Natural Resources. We have a director, David Nesslin, and, yeah, sorry for the kind of blurry handwriting. We also, or labels, we have a governor-appointed commission that has nine governor-appointed commissioners, and two of the, and I've passed around the biographies of those people. Two of the commissioners are the executive director of the Department of Natural Resources, but the executive director of the Department of Health is also a member of our commission and comes, and is, sits on the commission as, so, I'm going to, we also have about 70 people, total commission staff. I'm going to maybe focus a little bit on these three technical areas. We've got the engineering group, and environmental group, and an inspection group. And then with me tonight is Jim Precup, who's standing over here, who's the inspection supervisor for this area. And so he's somebody that you folks probably need to get to know, too. So this, here we go, just a breakdown, again, a map of the state. This is our engineering group, shows the distribution of engineers. There are nine engineers and one technician. All of these people have degrees in engineering, and many of them are engineering in training, and actually more of them are professional engineers. So it's a highly technically capable group of engineering staff. Their responsibilities are to review these applications for permits to drill, and they are responsible for making sure that those wells are designed properly, and that they're, that they are designed to isolate the hydrocarbon-bearing formations from the, from each other and from the overlying water formations. So they're really responsible for the first line of defense to protect the groundwater resources of the state. And they, every permit, every permit they review, they look, do a detailed evaluation of the groundwater resources in those areas, and how will the well, how does the oil and gas well need to be designed in order to prevent cross-contamination, anything from the hydrocarbon-bearing formations getting up into the water-bearing formations. They also look at every, the intent to abandon, so once the wells are all finished, they've played out, there's not, they're not economically viable anymore. Those wells have to be plugged and abandoned properly. They review those plugging and abandoning orders, making sure that, again, the hydrocarbon-bearing formations are isolated. Unfortunately, we do have a number of situations where there are what we call orphaned wells, wells that no longer have an oil and gas operator. And these come to our attention, a farmer calls us up and says, "You know, there's this piece of casing in the ground. Most of them are very old." Somebody mentioned the Boulder Oil Field, that's been in existence, or was discovered, I think it was the second field discovered in the state. Florence Canyon City, the oldest field in the state, was discovered back in 1870. So there's a very long history of oil and gas development in the state, and certainly today's standards are quite a bit different than they would have been in 1910. So we do find old wells. The staff has an appropriation from the legislature to go in and properly plug and abandon all orphaned oil and gas wells. So that's something that we do. We have, this is a picture of the field inspection group. We just, we're introduced to Jim. There are 15 field inspectors through the area. They're really the boots on the ground. They have, most of them have degrees in science, you know, geology, engineering. They also have decades of experience, you know, in the oil and gas industry. Last year, they conducted over 17,000 inspections. If you do the math, that's, you know, visiting probably about one-third of the wells that are active in the state, but still, it's a large number of inspections. One of their primary functions is to respond to complaints, because we certainly do get complaints about oil and gas operations and impacts to oil and gas operations. They're also, so they do their inspections, but they also are, one of the other inspection types that they do is to these final and interim reclamation inspections, to make sure that when the land, when the wells are drilled, because there is a large surface disturbance when the wells are drilled, but once the wells are drilled and completed, those pads can be shrunk down to very small footprints. And if you look in this area, you'll see a lot of wells that are sitting in about a 10 by 10-foot square area, and the farmers have actually, you know, farmed right up to the, to the edges of that well, very reduced well pad. The environmental staff, we've got 14, or geologists, hydrogeologists. We have a geochemist, PhD geochemist on our staff. These oil and gas location assessment folks are the people that are reviewing another form that's submitted by operators. They're called a Form 2A. It is information and a permit for the surface disturbance. And it's with that, that Form 2A process that there is a very strong role for local government, surface owners, to play in providing comments and having discussions with the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission staff about those surface disturbance, surface disturbances. What does the oil environmental group do? There have been lots of questions about impacts to groundwater and surface water resources. The Oil and Gas Conservation Commission is the agency that's delegated to implement the groundwater standards and classifications that are set by the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment, the Water Quality Control Commission. So we take that role extremely seriously. We also permit and oversee the management of exploration and production waste, wastes, because there are wastes generated. There's the flowback from the fracking fluids, there's drilling fluids, there's produced water, so air spills and releases. So there are certainly wastes that do occur, or are generated by this industry, and we are responsible for overseeing and making sure those wastes are properly managed. When spills and releases or incidents do occur, operators have to clean those, or mitigate the impacts, and clean up the impacts that they've caused. We have requirements for them to submit these site investigation remediation work plans. We also respond to lots of complaints alleging impacts to public health, safety, and welfare, to their water and soil resources. So we have staff that goes out every, if we get a complaint, we go out and we, those complaints are investigated. We also conduct studies to establish the baseline and current conditions prior to or during oil and gas operations and development. That's groundwater standard, baseline conditions. And we also have this environmental review. We have to report to the Water Quality Control Commission annually at one of their hearings. We submit a written report, plus make a public presentation to them. And we have quarterly meetings with the Water Quality Control Commission and Water Quality Control Division staff to discuss what are issues that we have related to oil and gas, or how our implementation of their program is progressing. This is a shot of our website, and we've clicked on over here, Rules. And so this is the body of rules that have been promulgated, passed by our commission. And we've heard, you've heard today many times, interest in having the chemicals that are used in hydraulic fracturing disclosed. And so our commission has listened to that same kind of testimony repeatedly, and on December 12th, they will be taking into, or making a decision and adopting a disclosure rule for hydraulic fracturing chemicals. So anybody that's interested is, there's a place on our website where you can get the proposed language, you can electronically submit a comment, you can come to the hearing. So that's going to happen on December, yeah, December 5th. Some of the rules that address the EMP waste management, I'm just going to hop through these pretty quickly. We've got rules about pits. Pits still are used, but in some applications, the number of pits just continued, that is, are used just continues to be decreased. And in fact, almost all of the oil and gas drilling operations in Weld County are now done with what's called a pitless drilling, so that those big, the pits that were used to circulate the drilling fluids just aren't being used anymore, especially in Weld County. There are certain areas where they are used, and they can be used effectively when they're properly installed and maintained. We have management rules. Operators are doing more and more reuse and recycling. I hear you talking about where is all the water for the frac fluids coming from? A lot of, you know, there is water co-produced with oil and gas, the oil and gas, the hydrocarbon. And so in some areas, operators are reusing and recycling that produced water, rather than paying to have, buy clean water from municipality, they'll reuse and recycle their fluids. So that's definitely on the rise, more and more operators doing that. We have, well, I'm not going to read all this, but, so, let me go on. So what kinds of wastes are generated? We're talking about the drilling fluids, the flowback from the fracking fluids, and oily waste. So the drilling and the flowback fluids, those are things that happen initially. That's when the wells are being drilled and completed. And then those wastes are just, aren't being generated anymore because the well's drilled and completed. But there are oily wastes that can be generated through the lifetime of a well, if the well produces oily, oil or condensate. So if you have spills or releases of oil, you will have, that material does need to be cleaned up, and the spills and releases, we'll get into that in just a little bit more later. Produced water, that's the largest volume of waste that is produced through the life of a well. And approximately 60% of the produced water, that's water that's co-produced, we're not talking about the water that people are using, you know, their water wells are completed in. This is water that's entrained in the same formation that the hydrocarbons are coming from. About 60% of that is injected, about 20% of it still goes into pits, and those pits could be commercial pits that are, the commercial disposal pits are actually regulated by the Health Department, solid waste. We regulate the non-commercial pits. And approximately 20% of the water is discharged, that's the produced water. There is no, at least in Colorado, there is no flowback or frac fluids that are being discharged to municipal wastewater treatment plants or to the, to surface water. Those fluids are sent down injection wells, and there are a number of, a large number of injection wells in Weld County, and that's where, how those wastes are handled. Let's see, spills and releases. So spills and releases do occur. You know, industry handles large volumes of liquid. We do, our rules require that those spills and releases are controlled and contained immediately. They have to be reported to the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission on Form, on our Form 19s. They need to be reported to the landowner, and in certain circumstances, they're reported to the Health Department also. Those, depending upon the magnitude of the spill, they have to be cleaned up. They'll either be cleaned up through the, using the actual Form 19, the pit permit, or a Form 27, which is our site investigation remediation work plan. It's a more detailed work plan where the operator describes what they're going to do, how they're going to clean it up, what are they going to do with their waste. We encourage, our rules encourage the prevention of spills and releases. It's just...
Quick question.
Sure. Sorry. Sure. Sorry.
Mayor Protem Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. The report to the landowner and what's the timeframe of that?
Within 24, it depends upon the value. You know, I'd have to refer to the rules. I think it's within 24 hours.
So just in general, within 24 hours? Okay, thank you.
I will check the rules to make triple sure of that.
Councilmember Finley also has a question.
Yes. You said that the drilling fluids are sent down injection wells. Can you describe what that is and how big it is and-
I mean, how, the well, or the-
Yeah, can you just describe the well to me?
Yeah, sure. It's, it, if you went to the land surface, you'd see a well that would look similar to an oil and gas well. So there, but typically in the, in the DJ Basin or the Wattenberg Field, they're drilled into formations that are deeper below the oil and gas producing formations. So they're wells that are drilled down into the, some of the deeper formations, or might be drilled into formations that are, where, where the oil and gas has been depleted, where the formation is no longer producing oil and gas. And so now they're just, they're reinjecting the fluids into the, into the well. So I guess I'm not, other than, it just looks like, now, it may have surface facilities like pads where trucks move, you know, come and will offload the liquids into a tank, and then the tank will either, those fluids are either pumped or just by gravity will drop into the well. So it's pretty simple, straightforward. But they are, the underground injection control wells, the responsibility for permitting those falls to the, has been delegated to the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission by the, by the EPA. So we are, they oversee the program, we implement the program on their behalf on tribal land. So there are two Indian reservations in Colorado, and on the tribal land, the EPA retains their authority over those injection wells.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have, so you have a spill or release, and then you have to clean it up. So we have guidelines in our 900 series rules. We have cleanup standards for soils, we have cleanup standards for groundwater. The cleanup standards for groundwater are the groundwater standards that are set by the Water Quality Control Commission of the Department of Public Health and the Environment. We don't set those, but if, if groundwater is impacted, those are the standards that have to be met, have to be met. The soil standards that we have are very conservative concentrations of a broad range of organic compounds and other substances. And those, we've designed those, they were updated in 2008 to be protective of all future land uses. Because one of the things we recognize was that, that the land use is changing, that what used to be a farm's field, you know, a ranch in the middle of nowhere is now in the middle or on the fringes of a, of a city that's encroaching on the oil and gas activities. And so now we have standards that will hopefully protect those future land uses.
Councilmember Bagley, you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Yeah, I, you mentioned cleanup standards. My question is, suppose you've got a home, you know, farmland, house, whatever, and it's just it, what it is right now before there is drilling, okay, the Seaman's Home, for example. So let's suppose that drill comes in, consolidated pad, and there's some type of incident. The cleanup standards that are set by all the government agencies, are those standards, in your opinion, capable of bringing the property up to the value before the incident? Or do people frankly get screwed?
Well, I'd like to think they don't get screwed.
But do they?
I think that, and I guess I, I don't want to make a comment about that, but I, the, the, the standards are, actually, on some levels, the Oil and Gas Conservation Commission has even broader regulatory authority because our rules can say there can be no impact.
Okay, so they-
Yeah. But that being said, as far as soils are concerned, cleaning up soils is a relatively easy operation if you have a spill or release. It can be, you know, what frequently will happen is those soils are just dug up and then, and samples are taken below to demonstrate that the concentrations meet our standards or meet background standards. But I, I guess to be very direct, there would be times when, if there was absolutely no petroleum hydrocarbon in a soil, our standard is 500 milligrams per kilogram. So if you had an oil spill, it's possible that the soil would not be remediated back down to non-detect if that was what was there before.
And I don't know if you can answer this or somebody else, there was a point brought up earlier that it's such a concern to the banks that they won't give mortgages? Is that-
I, I, I can't speak to that.
Okay, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Okay. So, whoops, go back to that. So as far as groundwater, I'm telling you that we ensure that groundwater is protected. So how do we go about doing that? One of the ways that we go about doing that is, is collecting water samples from groundwater wells and from oil and gas wells. So we collect data. We go out and at this moment in our database, analytical database, we've got analytical data from over 6,000 water wells and 6,500 oil and gas wells. We've collected those samples, our third-party contractors have, other agencies have, and operators have. We've collected samples to establish baseline and current conditions. I'll show a little bit more about that in a minute. We collect, and this is very important, collect samples in response to complaints or just requests. Albert County's come up quite a bit, where there is very little oil and gas development in Albert County, but a lot of leasing going on in Albert County. We get lots of requests from people that's saying, concerned that in the, they want to know what their, the baseline conditions are, what's the quality of their water now. So we've got an active program going on down in Albert County where we've collected samples from 25 or 30 water wells down there and putting together a written report on the overall water quality in that area long before any oil and gas even permits have been issued. So we do that. We also have orders in certain parts of the state, orders by the commission, that require baseline sampling and then sampling at periodic intervals after the oil and gas wells are drilled and completed and operated, so that can be done. We also have some rules that require baseline sampling, and a rule that would be of interest to you is our 318A, which is the Greater Wattenberg Rule. So it requires operators to collect baseline water samples. We also have samples that are collected in, in response to these site investigation remediation work plans where groundwater or soils have been impacted. Picture of our, again, the state, the blue squares represent the areas in which water samples, we have water, analytical data from water wells, the green circles are, or I guess they're diamonds actually, are the oil and gas wells that we have samples collected. And let's see, where can you find some of this information? So once again, the trusty dusty website. Encourage everybody to go, just cruise around in it. But if you go to the website and you go to the library over here, you'll find topics called area reports. And so in those area reports, or in those different basins arranged by basin, you'll find that we've done five studies in the Piantz Basin, out there in Garfield County. We've done base, studies down in the Raton Basin, in the San Juan Basin, in the DJ Basin. We did, we've done an Ogallala aquifer study and upper Crow Creek water study. We did a study in Adams County of the Arapaho Aquifer, Greater Wattenberg Area Sand Wash. And as I mentioned, we've got an ongoing study that we're doing in Albert County now. What's the best way to protect groundwater to make sure that, the very first thing, that the wells are properly drilled, completed, and operated, and that they're, that they isolate, they're constructed so they isolate the groundwater from the hydrocarbon-bearing formations? Because you have heard a lot about fracking, but in fact, the hydrocarbon that's coming out of the well for the life of the well, you certainly don't want that to come in contact with the water resources either. So designing the well and then maintaining that well integrity is paramount to protecting groundwater resources. The storing, treating, reusing, recycling waste has to, has to be done. Properly installing and maintaining this production equipment. You talked about those tanks that you see around sites, making sure that there's proper secondary containment around those tanks. So if a spill or release does it-
Excuse me for just a second. We've got a question here for Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just a quick, if we, when we go home and we surf around, the studies showing what is the water quality like? Given that we have 46,000 wells in Colorado, 24,000, you know, in the Wattenberg area, what have those studies shown? Has water been impacted?
There have been instances where groundwater has been impacted.
What about drinking water?
And there's, there have been instances where drinking water has been impacted. We've heard a couple of them brought up today that were, I don't want to get into necessarily get into Gasland, but I would recommend that you go on our website because some of the information that was presented in the, the movie Gasland is not correct, that we investigated those allegations of impacts. And in fact, I think somebody else mentioned it, that in, the Laramie-Fox Hills is a major aquifer in Weld County. And there are, and somebody else mentioned the coal mines. And so there are coal seams in, interbedded with those water-bearing zones that people have their water wells drilled in. And it is not uncommon for water wells to have very high concentrations of gas in them naturally occurring. It's part of the formation that the water well is installed in. And we can tell the difference between the gas that's there in the, in the, in the Laramie-Fox Hills from the gas that's being produced by the oil and gas wells by collecting samples and having compositional analysis done, what's the composition of the gas, and also doing stable isotope analysis on the carbon and the hydrogen of the methane. And you can compare those, and you can see, is this gas that occurs naturally in those water-bearing formations? Or is it gas, the same gas that's being produced by oil and gas wells?
The, the gas that's being produced in the oil and gas wells, two questions. One, if you find it, can you fix it? And two, what, what percentage of aquifers actually have been affected by the drilling process? That make sense? So number one, when you do find a problem, is it fixable? And two, when you're doing studies and assuming that there's been some type of drilling that goes on there, what percentage of the actual aquifers that have drilling have problems? Is that my being clear?
Okay, I'll only do one at a time.
Compound question.
I have gray here. Let me just do one at a time. Okay, so, repeat the first question, so, yeah.
Is it, is it, is it possible to fix when there's a problem?
Yes, okay. So we're, the good news is, we often can get it fixed. We can identify what well has caused the problem, and it's usually from, surface casing hasn't completely isolated the aquifer, or some of these wells are old, they'll get corrosion in them, just it's a steel pipe and you'll get, pipe can corrode, you get a hole, and all of a sudden, some gases getting out of the pipe and into the annular space between the casing and the wellbore, and it gets into the aquifer. And so that, and if it's, if it's something like, or, or a well seal won't be, will have worn out. Those things can be easily fixed or relatively easily fixed and can be, so you cut off the source. In some cases, that, cutting off the source in fairly short amount of time, and we can identify that by continuing to monitor the impacted water well. Those impacts will decrease over time. Sometimes it can take a very long time. And, and so at that point, we require operators to mitigate the problem, to provide an alternative source of water or to provide treatment to the landowner. And then there may be other private negotiations that go on after that.
My brother's an insurance agent. He's always preaching to me about actuary tables and stuff. What are the odds, when you drill, that there's going to be a problem with the water? I mean, is it like astronomically low? Is it like all our water in Colorado has been impacted? What, what can you expect?
Well, again, there are 46,000 wells, we probably have fewer than 50 well, water wells that have been impacted. That we're, we've investigated and we're aware of probably, probably more like 25, I'd say.
25 divided by 46,000, whatever.
Right. But that doesn't minimize, if it's your water well and it's your only source of water, that's a serious impact. There's no question about that. I mean, we're not trying to minimize this at all. I would also say, though, that the spills and the releases at the, you know, associated with the surface facilities, they will impact shallow groundwater resources fairly commonly. But those tend to be very isolated, very small little pools of contaminated water that can be remediated quickly. They'll remove the source, the contaminated soil, the oily soil, and, you know, remove the groundwater until they, and then collect samples to prove that those, that the groundwater then meets the groundwater standards and classifications.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mayor, if I could ask a question? Debbie indicated that when requested, baseline standards would be conducted or baseline studies conducted, is it possible that, since there's a lot of concern about the water around Union Reservoir, that a request would be honored and the commission would actually conduct a study of the baseline water conditions around Union?
I'd say that's entirely possible. Wouldn't be at all, yeah, it would be reasonably easily done. And I don't know if Tisha Shuliver is going to be speaking after me, is going to be talking about a program that operators are taking on themselves. So, yeah, I think that there wouldn't be an issue, to say yes.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to move that we extend the meeting past 11 o'clock to conform with our, our rules, that we complete the, the end of our agenda for retreat and council call.
Any more discussion? I guess let's vote. Okay, I guess we're going to extend the meeting.
You know, and I, I really, I prefaced, or I started out saying, you know, this is perhaps the first, your first opportunity for us to be able to talk to you about the oil, or the state's role in regulating oil and gas. And I do have a few more pages, but I, I really don't need to just keep going on and on. We can turn it over to other presenters, and we can continue this in another meeting. I'll leave that up to you folks. I've, maybe got a couple minutes.
Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, would it be possible to get your powerpoint presentation?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right. So do you want me to keep going, or should I turn it over to the next speaker?
Why don't we go to the next speaker?
Actually, I have a question.
Oh, just excuse me, Sarah, our, Councilmember Levison has a question.
Ms. Baldwin, where's the role of the Clean Water Act in, in any of these regulatory rules? Because, you know, it's, it's fine and good that you've got rules and, you know, there's stuff, there have been rulings in the past with major violators of the Clean Water Act. In fact, Walmart had, in the state of Delaware, two separate issues of federal judge orders to have special rules, in fact, for contractors and subcontractors on their properties because of persistent and flagrant violations of the Clean Water Act. And in fact, you know, a lot of times it goes unreported because there aren't enough regulators, you know, to notice whether or not there, a spill has occurred, and whether or not dust and, and topsoil is being carried off sites. And so most people in this community, in fact, until I was doing research on that particular issue, were unaware of those violations of the Clean Water Act by the Walmart Corporation. Do you have your top violators of companies that you dealt with and also that somehow our constituents here could run down, you know, who might have federal court judgments under the Clean Water Act out there that, that maybe your regulatory authority is unaware of?
No, I, the answer to your last question is no, we wouldn't keep a record of that. But all of our violations, again, go to- But, all of our violations, again, go to the Trusts and Dusty website, and under Orders, uh, on the left-hand side, click Orders, the 1V is one for violations, and you can see all the violations that have been, uh, the Orders Finding Violation, or the Administrative Orders by Consent, and, and the penalties that have been assessed. So that's, that's there for anybody to look at and, and see what the rules are. If, if the Clean Water Act, I mean, um, it, it sounds like you're talking primarily about stormwater controls and erosion controls and, and those kinds of things.
Well, and I also saw your indication of, um, BMP practices, and I know that the ci, our city is, um, uh, under the, the secondary classification for, um, stormwater permitting. And so, uh, when you're talking about remediating any of these, um, surface impacts, um, what takes precedent? The Clean Water Act, or your rules and regulations?
Well, I, as far as stormwater is concerned, these, these are considered construction sites, and so operators have to get constructions permits from the, uh, Health Department for their stormwater controls during the construction phase of those operations. We also have some parallel rules that relate to, uh, and we also put a lot of conditions on, of approval on these location assessments that require, require best management practices for controlling sediment and runoff and run-on and mud tracking. And so those are, and then our inspectors, that's one of the things that they go and inspect. And so, um, I'd, I'd say, I think, is it perfect? No, but I think overall, we do a pretty good job. And I think operators are becoming more and more aware of their obligations to, uh, control, uh, stormwater runoff, not only runoff, but run-on, especially in rugged terrains in the western part of the state where the topography is extreme and the snowpack is huge, those stormwater controls are enormously important, so.
And I, I guess note to staff, um, that's another one of those regulatory features that we are authorized through the state permitting, um, authority to look at those kind of things when we're reviewing, um, site pads and, um, and the, uh, a different level of permitting that the city has authority over. So, thank you.
I'll let Tisha take those.
Our next speaker is Tisha Schuler from the Colorado Oil and Gas Association.
Mayor, council members, thank you for having me. The good news is I'm your last speaker. The bad news is I'm from the oil and gas industry, so thank you for having me. I want to thank, um, the city council and also all the members who have, all the members of the community who have voiced their opinion tonight, because there's nothing more important than that we have these educational forums, particularly before a decision is before you. So, I appreciate all the input we heard from the community, and I want to know that we, the industry, also hear that from the community. And I want to thank you for engaging in education before, before, um, you have a decision before you. Um, my drilling and hydraulic fracturing 101 usually takes an hour, but your good fortune is that I was only granted ten minutes tonight. So I will go through some common misperceptions about the oil and gas industry and invite you to, if you want more information, I'd be happy to come back to future meetings, preferably not at this hour, but if that's what it takes, I'd be happy to do that as well. Okay. So, just a little bit about the oil and gas process. One misperception common among our communities before they've had drilling in their area is that hydraulic fracturing fluids are injected directly into groundwater, or there's this perception that there's this direct communication. So I just want to address that. So the Niobrara Formation, which is what we've been talking about here tonight, is at seven thousand feet below ground surface. So to give some perspective on that, that's ten Wells Fargo Towers. The Wells Fargo Building is the second tallest building in Denver. So, this is really quite a deep resource separated from the shallow aquifers. And the entire purpose of cementing and casing, which is the layers of steel and cement that are put into the wellbore, is to isolate the aquifer and to isolate the oil and gas resource. So let me show that in a little more detail. So first is the surface casing, that's shown in the slide in purple. The purpose of surface casing is to isolate the surface water resource. This is regulated by the state, the cementing and casing has to be set to certain standards, and the purpose is simply to protect the aquifer. And then there's another level that's called the production casing, that's shown here in purple. And the purpose here is to isolate the oil and gas resource at depth and ensure that it's only traveling through cement and steel to the surface. Now, one thing that we've heard talked about today is how important setting, cementing, and casing is. So there are cement bond log requirements in the rules, whose purpose is to ensure that the cementing is set appropriately, and there are also pressure tests that are required. So there's another misperception that hydraulic fracturing is not engineered, and so I just want to provide, um, a, a little more information about that. There are many, tens of, hundreds of people in Colorado alone who spend their, their life just designing hydraulic fracture jobs. So a ton of data is required. The properties of the formation, the fluid properties, both the fluids in the resource and the fluids that will be injected, the proppant, which is the tiny little sand grains that go into a fracture to hold those fractures open so the oil and gas resource can flow out. All this data is then put together into a detailed design, and that detailed design is then developed into a pump schedule. So there's actually a whole team of people whose whole purpose is to design the fracture, and then another team that monitor it. And everything that's going to be used is tracked by the minute, and you can actually go sit in a trailer, and it's about as exciting as watching paint dry, because for several hours, you're just watching one fluid be added after another. And all of these things are tracked. The fluids are tracked, the pressures are tracked, and all of this gives real-time information about what's happening downhole. So if there was any kind of release during a hydraulic fracture, any kind of failure of the formation, any kind of failure of the casing, the operator knows immediately, they have to shut the well in and they have to notify COGCC immediately. Furthermore, all of this information is required by regulation to be kept for five years. So if there's concern that a hydraulic fracturing operation affected a groundwater well, the agency can actually do some forensic analysis of what happened during the fracture operation. So another perception that we heard quite a bit tonight is that drilling is getting riskier, that there's these new technologies. And what I actually want to propose is a different view, which is drilling is simply getting more and more advanced, and we can now access significantly more resource with a tiny fraction of the footprint that we once could. So it used to be on the left, you see a vertical wellbore, and you would have contact with a geologic layer, just in that one four-inch hole. Now, with horizontal bores, you can actually follow that resource. So what that allows is that instead of having thirty-two wellpads to access a resource, you can have several horizontal wells on one wellpad. And we heard some discussion about that earlier tonight, but what's really significant is this is a tiny fraction of surface footprint, roads, pipelines, traffic, all the things that would have been going to access the same resources now a tiny fraction. This is actually an accomplishment to be celebrated. Uh, one thing we heard a lot tonight, so I'm going to spend a little more time on this and, and, and try everyone's weary brains with some numbers on how much water is used in hydraulic fracturing. So first, I want to acknowledge that water is important to all of us in Colorado. There's no doubt about that. And the most recent, what, well-sided data is two thousand and five USGS data about water use in Colorado. So this is the basis of the numbers I'm going to show you. And you have all these, so you can analyze them at your leisure tomorrow. But what you essentially see is if you just look at irrigation, four thousand four hundred ninety-seven at the top, and four, forty-nine, five-seven at the bottom, irrigation makes up more than ninety percent of all water used in Colorado. And I, I just say that to give some context. So we ran some numbers at maximum buildout in two thousand and twelve, how much water would the oil and gas industry use? And so I have more slides that aren't included here due to time, but what I will tell you is the maximum water used in drilling operations is five million gallons. That's drilling and hydraulic fracturing. There was a lot of numbers thrown out today, but that's the number, five million, for a horizontal well. And so, for a vertical well, that number generally averages around two hundred thousand gallons. So that includes the drilling and the hydraulic fracturing of the well. But I used the most conservative numbers that we could come up with. A maximum number for, of five million gallons for any horizontal wells. I tripled the number of likely horizontal wells in the state, and then I used a million gallons for vertical wells. So I used much higher than anything we've ever seen in the state. So it's this huge, very conservative numbers of water used. What we still find is that we use one, one, a small fraction, so eleven one-hundredths of, of one percent of all Colorado water use. So this is a tiny fraction in the context of the state, which isn't in any way to minimize the importance of water used, but it is to put it in some context. Okay, so, oh, I'm not sure what these two slides are, I'm sorry, but we'll just use the more conservative numbers here. This, this documents my, my numbers better. A thousand horizontal wells at five million, fifteen hundred vertical wells at a million gallons, fourteen one-hundredths of one percent of all water used in the state. And just to put this in context, oil and gas production, the BTU produce the energy produced per water used is one of the most efficient uses of water when you are talking about how you produce energy. Okay, and, um, Debbie Baldwin of COGCC already talked about...
Can I ask a question here?
Sure.
Council member Witt.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I did have a question in regards to, when you're talking about the, the cement and the casing, I know I'm several slides back, but was it not the, the casing that was the problem with the Deepwater Horizon? And how are we, how is this different than what they were doing in, in that regard? And how can we make sure that something like that doesn't happen? I know it's in water, that's one difference. But, how can we assure that that's sort of thing doesn't happen here?
Right. Mayor and council member Witt, thank you. Um, the, there's a few things. Most releases related to oil and gas operations are casing failure, so your question is good. And the things that we can do are things put in place in two thousand and eight in Colorado's total revision of their rules, and that includes the cement bond logs to ensure that the cement is, is holding, and then the pressure tests, and then the constant monitoring of the Brayden Head pressure during hydraulic fracturing. So there's a number of regulations and tests which are designed simply to ensure that that casing is, is, is done properly.
We have another question from council member Bag, Bagley.
I'm going to squeeze in a couple, uh, surprise. Um, how, you, you mentioned tracking. So I'm picturing the guy in a trailer, and he's watching the paint dry. How often do they have to shut it down because something goes wrong?
Okay, so Mayor and, um, council member Bagley, I don't know the answer to that, but it's very infrequent. Uh, the, I don't have numbers, but that's something that I can look into and get an answer out to.
I'd just be curious. And then also, uh, there was a question earlier, we've got, around Union Reservoir, there are several wells, two specifically, that were drilled, I don't know, anciently, but there was some question as to whether or not drilling nearby might affect or have an impact on pre-existing wells and their casing? Is that a legitimate concern, an illegitimate concern?
That is a legitimate concern, and this is a better question directed to COGCC, but I believe that the regulatory review of a wellsite includes looking at formerly plugged and abandoned wells and ensuring that they're properly.
Okay, and then, and then last but not least, all this water, small percentage, but it's a lot of water, just, I'm just curious, what is the actual physical way that you get the water when you're drilling? I mean, do you build fire hydrants, run a garden hose, get it out of the ground, suck it out of the reservoir? Where does it come from?
Right, so operators have to get their water in the same way that any other water user. So under Colorado water law, they have to obtain either leases or purchase rights. It comes from a variety of ways they might purchase it, from a municipality, from a landowner. If they have wat, water rights, they might drill a well. Um, so there's many, many ways, in the same way that any water user has to look at water rights, companies across the state are looking at it in a variety of ways.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council, council member Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just have always, um, been told that Colorado has the most comprehensive oil and gas regulations in the United States. Is that true?
That is true. As of two thousand and eight, that's true.
Thank you.
Okay. So, let, let me just talk a little bit about groundwater. Debbie Baldwin with COGCC talked about the ten years of data. I'll just reiterate that in the San Juan Basin of Colorado, there's ten years of pre- and post-drilling groundwater data. It's in a database, all the reports are available on the COGCC website, that has indicated that drilling operations can occur in a region and he, heavy drilling operations without impacting drinking water. But I want to talk a little bit more about what the industry is doing as well to further, uh, bring that information to our stakeholders. The first is there's quite a few comments about hydraulic fracturing disclosure. Debbie Baldwin mentioned that the state is going through a rulemaking process. KOGA supports that process and we're participating in it. And it, it's important that stakeholders know they don't have to wait for that rule to be in place. The FracFocus website, which anyone here can go to at fracfocus.org, discloses chemicals on a well-by-well basis across the state. So that information is available right now, and we want people to know they don't have to wait for it. An example of information disclosed in FracFocus is that for each well, you'll find each of the constituents, uh, what they're used for, the percentage that they're included in the mix, um, of additives, and in the total mix of water. So there's quite a bit of information out there, as well as general information about, there were a lot of questions about what are these things used for, why are they used, where else could I find them in my household? Those kind of things are all available on the FracFocus website. In addition to that, KOGA rolled out this summer with, um, the Higginliper Administration Support, a statewide baseline groundwater sampling program. We have gotten, companies that represent ninety percent of all wells drilled in the state, signed up for this program. It's the first of its kind in the country. Our objective is a hundred percent, and companies participating will take samples before and after drilling. All that information will be available to the public on the COGCC website, and that will start January first. So there was a lot of questions today. I would like to direct all of you to KOGA's website at koga.org. That may be a source of information, or we're happy to come do presentations on things in the future. I hope that when you watch Gasland, that you'll have some reading material nearby of all the Colorado instances, um, that are discussed in that movie, so you can get more background information. And with that, I'd be happy to take any more questions.
Any more questions? No, seeing no questions. Oh, and excuse me, there is one. Uh, council member Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. FracFocus, that disclosure site, is that voluntary at this point?
It's voluntary at this time, and then when the rulemaking goes into effect, then a disclosure will be mandatory.
And I don't know, I don't expect you to know the future, be able to read the tea leaves, but working where you do, is that going to pass on the twelfth?
Going to pass, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
My question was that if ninety percent of the industry is now voluntarily reporting on FracFocus, uh, do you have the names of the ten percent that are not?
Uh, so, so the ninety percent participating are participating in KOGA's voluntary baseline water sampling program. Names of participating companies are on KOGA's website. We are literally calling and recruiting every other company in the, that has drilled a well in the state this year, so, the, we're doing significant outreach, but anybody can go see who's participating on our website.
Council member Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Um, I was just going to mention that if we can get all the PowerPoint presentations sent to us, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Sir.
Uh, Mayor Coombs and, and members of council, so the next steps, just to briefly let you know, um, that we're going to continue and try to complete the review of these issues by the various boards and advisory boards, and compile those recommendations back to PNC and council. And to remind you again, those boards are the Water Board, the Parks and Recreation Board, and the Board of Environmental Affairs. That is ongoing, and so that public process is, is continuing. If there is a, an application brought forward for, um, consolidated drilling, that will be, as, as Brad Skol mentioned, that, that will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for their action and determination, um, and could also follow up to council and inform them of an appeal if it's made. We are underway with the preparation of service use agreements, which will be a companion document for the consolidated drilling, uh, site plans, uh, again, if those come forward. And, um, we, we understand that you want to see copies of those agreements as they are getting prepared. And, um, also whether or not, if there's a, a permit that is applied for, for seismic surveys, again, those, that will be evaluated and also brought back for city council. again, those, that will be evaluated and also brought back for city council. I think I've also heard any number of questions that you want answers to, and information that you'll want us to bring back. I'd anticipate we'll bring that back at another study session for you, as soon as we can compile that information and, and get it to you. It'd be helpful for us as well, if you would like to have any additional follow-up from any of the folks that have presented tonight, or if there are other folks that you want to also have us try to bring forward for, for your information.
Thank you. Yeah, one of my questions was, can we have another study session where perhaps we have other experts on the other side of the argument, maybe give us more education too?
Again, if that's, if that's what the council was, is looking for, that's something certainly staff can look into.
So I guess we're on to the next item? Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Witt.
Thank you. I just want to say very quickly how much I appreciate, number one, all of our residents coming out and expressing their concerns and what they've learned in their research, I really appreciate that, and I very much appreciate our, the experts who came tonight and explained things very much needed, and you've done a great job, and staff, thank you so much for taking the time to put this together.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we have a application in the works, I think it would be very instructive, since I attended the Parks and Rec Advisory Board last night, and the board really had no background at all. Zippo, none, I don't know if they've all taken, you know, tons of time to research this on their own, but I, I think that to have a common base of knowledge of every single one of these citizen advisory boards would be relevant. In fact, I move that we convene a super committee meeting to make sure that all those questions are asked and answered, and that those boards that have various parts of this discussion can hear what the other boards have asked as well, because I know everyone has their individual silo, and what can be asked at, asked at Water Board is different than maybe something that will be asked at, at Parks and Rec, and then at Board of Environmental Affairs. And maybe somebody at Board of Environmental Affairs will ask a question that's better the purview of Water Board, and those folks at Water Board didn't think to ask that question, but it might be a relevant question. And, and certainly, you know, the, because each board has a different charge, staff can't have everybody in the room to answer the questions that come up, and it may not be the purview of that board to have that question asked at that, at that, that meeting. So I just want to make sure if we get, if we can convene a, a super meeting of all these boards and commissions, before there's anything that's in front of planning staff, and to try to do that as quickly as possible. So that, that's my motion, and see how it goes. Do you have a second?
Just, do we have a second? Okay. Any discussion? Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would suggest that planning and zoning be included in that as well.
All right. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I was having a similar thought, I think it just is a great idea to have all, I mean, basically the same meeting repeated, minus the death threats. And, and, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My only concern is that none of the boards and commissions, they, a lot of these boards and commissions have been on separate dates. I would, you know, I, I think it's a great idea to have this meeting, however, it should be kicked to the boards and commissions to try to find, you know, an email needs to go out to boards and, those boards and commissions, to see if there is a date that actually works for the majority of, of those board members and commission members that can attend. For us to say, go do this on X date, you're not gonna get all the participation you possibly want. My, my recommendation, and I like the idea, but I, I would be more of, of, in favor of directing staff to send out emails to the boards and commissions, finding a date within the next three or four weeks that, that works for every, a good portion of those board members and commission members. Again, planning and, planning and zoning have very specific dates, they all do. Just by mandating what, what date to be there, you're gonna get some people that won't be able to attend.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think that I indicated in my motion any specific date, but just to have this super committee meeting convened without delay, and certainly if we can get enough of a quorum, three or four members, the chairs and vice chairs of the various committees, and maybe one or two other members, I think that that would serve the purpose, and certainly we respect and know that everyone is busy in these last couple of months of the year, and, and I, I think that we might have a, a little bit of, of time to still get it done. But I, I really do think that it would bring a consistent base of knowledge. Also, if it's possible that it could be held in a location, that it could be taped for the benefit of the public, that I think would be critical. And just as we did with Councilmember Witt's suggestion of putting up a specific part of the city's website around the airport master planning issues, I also would like to, to direct staff that we, I know we have a motion out there, but the next motion's gonna be to direct staff to set up something on the city's website so information can be accessed.
Mayor Protem Santos.
Mayor Coombs, my only, you know, I, I, again, I think the idea is valid, like to have the, the chairs and the vice chairs and one other board member, on some of these boards are seven or eight members, I, I think to, and try to encompass and help the majority of those boards and commissions to be there on, on a topic of such importance, more than three members from each board needs to be able to attend, not just the, the chair or the vice chair.
All right, any more discussion?
Could I just, so, just, just to clarify, so what we're going to try to accomplish with the super committee is to pull together this similar presentation, so that we get common information out to all the boards as simultaneously as we can, and have them in a room together where they can sort of share their insights and their questions. Am I hearing that right?
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and again, yes, and I think the, a very productive part of that meeting would be a healthy discussion among the various board members-
Between the boards.
Between the board members of those various committees, so I think that would serve a great public purpose.
All right. Any more discussion? Seeing none, I guess we have a motion, shall we vote? And the vote's unanimous.
Mayor, your next item is your potential two thousand, excuse me.
Sarah.
Thank you, Mayor. The, as I previewed for you a moment ago, my next motion is that, as we've done with the airport master planning process, that we direct staff to, I move that we direct staff to set up a selection on our city's website that will collect together this information from tonight's meeting, as well as the last couple of meetings of those various boards and commissions where items on this topic have been presented. Kind of a one-stop shop, if you will, and that for the benefit of not only the public here tonight, but others who might be viewing out there in TV land.
Seeing none, let's vote. That passes unanimously.
Now we'll move on to the retreat for 2012, and Sandy will present the item.
Mayor Coombs and members of city council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant to the City Manager, and I am here to talk about the city council retreat, date, place, et cetera, et cetera. Generally, this is the meeting in which we establish the date and the time and the place, and start talking topics, and we gather their topics and all those good things, but this year, staff would recommend that we do things a little differently. Because of quite a few reasons, which I've outlined in the council communication, specifically budget timing, a new city manager coming on board by March 30th, and the focus on Longmont update being completed in the first quarter of 2012, staff is recommending that we move the council retreat to April this year, or early May, either one, it's really up to the council, actually, the entire date is really up to council. So if the council decides that you would like to rather have it in January or February, then we would certainly be asking you a whole bunch of follow-up questions. However, if you decide that April or May is the right timeframe, if we could nail down some sort of a date and a place, then we could bring back a topic discussion as we get closer to that date.
All right. Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't want to violate open meeting law, so I just typed a little memo up to Sandy earlier today with a couple of, with an idea of maybe how we can continue to move some things forward and be productive next year with our work plan. I, I think we need to stay on track with a January retreat, and I've suggested a couple of dates for Sandy. One date I would remind council of is early part of February, and I don't recall if Sam Mamet, the Director of the Colorado Municipal League, if he had, he has the date, I can't recall if it's the, the first Friday or the first Saturday in February where they will have that newly-elected officials training. I, I just checked in with him, so we don't schedule our retreat on that date, which it's a great opportunity for newly-elected council members to learn things, so don't want to double-book people. But my suggestion is perhaps to look at a one-day or a day-and-a-half retreat in January with the council, and have a couple of items that we discuss, maybe a single day, and have three-quarters of the day spent discussing one or two potential work plan items and presentations, and then have a quarter of the day spent doing a team-building activity amongst all of our, just the council members, so we get some great synergy going. And then look at the second half of April as a, another date for a day-and-a-half retreat where the new city manager would be on board, we could spend half a day with senior staff of the new manager, doing some team-building as a group, and then have one full day to get some ideas from the new city manager, maybe a little bit of input for what council might want to talk about, and maybe one other agenda item. Split it into two parts, you know, if we don't, my, my feeling really is that if we don't set a work plan until June, we basically have disjointed our, our kind of yearly regimen, and we will only have six months to show anything productive on a 2012 work plan, and then it'll seem very close time, you know, basically four or five months after setting the work plan, we'll be in a November meeting deciding what we're gonna do in January 13th with not much space in between. So, you know, I, I want to get something started on a work plan at the beginning of the year, and, and have that assessment, especially the new council to operate under the former council's work plan for, you know, fourteen to sixteen months, I think doesn't give you guys a crack at having some of your ideas out there too, and, and I appreciate hearing what those ideas are.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I couldn't disagree more. We have a work plan that we currently are working on, and actually usually extends into the next year, there are items that always extend into the next year. I think it would be, and with no disrespect to Gordon, I think it would be inappropriate to start a work planner, work planner retreat for 2012 under one city manager, and then bringing in another city manager at, at the end of March. You know, I, I was kind of hoping that, I kind of like this proposal of having this in April, I wouldn't say May, but April, having a full-day retreat, full retreat, two days, full two days, perhaps having a team-building segment in, in January, in fact, I, I mentioned it to Sandy as well, about having a, a dinner with council members and spouses, and directors and spouses, and, you know, other members of staff that we deal with on a regular basis. That way, they get to know us, we get to know them, we get to know each other, it might be a large crowd, but you know, it's, it's something that I, I, I think is, would be beneficial. But I, I would just, just have the recommendation of having the retreat in April, a full-day retreat, a full two-day retreat, starting at eight, going till three or four each day. Usually the second day, we're always trying, we're cutting people off and we're running out of time, you know, you know, there's no sense of having a smaller retreat in January and then another retreat in, in April, that just really doesn't make sense, especially to have a work plan that's gonna carry over to the next year.
Councilmember Witt.
You know, when I was thinking about this, I had similar thoughts to Councilmember Levison, because I, I do feel that we have a tradition that this is how, how we do things, and, and I, I like the idea of, you know, it doesn't need to be a full-day, a full-two-day retreat, but I would like to have some time set aside that we plan out from January until April what we're going to do, and then pick up and plan the rest of the year. I think that, yes, we're going to have things slop over from, from this, but I think it would be appropriate to plan that out, see where we are, take the temperature, and I think we have enough facilities available that we can do it for minimal cost, so I'm, I'm supportive of Councilmember Levison's suggestion.
Mayor Coombs, may I add a couple of, just, just real minor detail things that if this, you know, if things shifted in this direction, that we'd have to consider. One is that the sound system at Xilinx, if that's where you chose, is not good, and so last year, we contracted a $4,000 contract to get that microphone system set up in there. If you decide to do that in two years, we don't have those kinds of funds budgeted specifically in order to do microphone systems both in January and in April or May. However, if you did a team building, or you did something to that effect in January, you wouldn't need the, that kind of a setup, so that's just one detail. The other thing is that I've checked on Xilinx's availability, and the dates that Councilmember Levison suggested, which were the second and third weekends of January, Xilinx is not available, they're available the fourth weekend in January, and also the second weekend in February. So of those dates, just to keep those in mind as far as dates, they are open for almost everything in April, except for one weekend and May. So just some details to consider as your, as your continued conversation.
Councilmember Samori.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. My thoughts are, if we are to have a meeting in January, then it would be an update of what is still left over for us to do, and how we're gonna accomplish it, and then in April, we can have the actual retreat where we plan future actions that we want to take. I think that would be a fair compromise, and it would serve the purposes of team-building and getting ideas from the newly-elected council as well, except Councilman Bagley.
I move that we all have group hugs once a week.
I second that.
I, I think it'd be a good idea and appropriate to wait, even though council sets, council sets direction, and the staff implements our, our supreme will, I guess, and it's late, so I'm struggling for vocabulary here. I, but I do think it would be appropriate, or more appropriate, to wait till we have our chief administrative officer on board who can work with us, and I, I, I just think that that would be a better use of time to wait for that. However, I'm not opposed in January to having some team-building and get-togethers, et cetera.
Councilmember Levison.
I don't want to break protocol, so I want to ask Councilmember Finley, before I have a second chance at the, the mic, if you would like a chance.
I guess, I would like a chance. I kind of feel that the best thing, the best compromise is to have the team-building exercise in January, and then moving our main-
in January and then moving our main session to early April.
Councilmember Levison.
I was going to suggest if we don't have the ability to use Xilinx Center, if we're doing some other activities and maybe just a, a small discussion on the work plan, maybe the current work plan about where we want to go with any of those aspects, then we could do it here in council chambers. You know, but we might be able to do it in blue jeans instead of suits and ties and stuff. So, yeah, you can wear a suit if you want to wear a suit. But I think that we could certainly accommodate having whatever, miking and, and all that kind of stuff without the additional cost. But one point I, I do want to have the new council members have a crack at actually being, having a productive, a chance of actually getting something, an idea of theirs on a work plan and having it worked on. And I think, again, six months, by the time we, we get something developed, we're, you know, June, we're all going to be going to, hopefully, we all will take advantage of going to CML and, and then we're in budget season. And I'm thinking there's not going to be a heck of a lot that comes out of a retreat, a full-blown retreat in April that we're going to be able to implement when we get into budget mode in, fully in August. That means we basically have one month in July. And, you know, I think it's a very valuable thing that we incorporate new members' ideas into the work plan. And I think that, that's something that, that I don't want to lose sight on. And if you want to give that up, then that's fine. But I think that's a very important part of, of you making your mark on, on our, our first year together.
Mayor Coombs, Mamet, just one scheduling conversation there. So when you're talking about the budget, so you don't see the budget until September, October, staff submits the budget by the end of May. And so part of the reasoning for the timing would be that if you did your retreat in either April or May, that gives the staff the time to actually put it in the budget for the 2013 budget. The way that council retreats are scheduled right now, you all give us the work plan in January, we either have to reshuffle, reprioritize, or just not, just not budget for those planned items until the very full next year. So to some extent, you already have that, that, that lap over with the budget. So I just want for you all to know when we actually submit it for that, for that conversation. And also, if you're interested in doing a team building in, in January or February, you certainly don't have to use Xilinx. Xilinx is available the last weekend in, in January and the second weekend in February. And there's also lots of other facilities that we could use for that. I mean, you're absolutely right. You could use study sessions here even to talk about the work plan if you'd like to go into depth. I'm sure we could have one study session that's dedicated to work plan conversation and, and wearing jeans is probably okay. Or you can have that, you know, we have lots of other city facilities that we have that would be available for that kind of an informal conversation. When you're talking about policies, presentations, work plan items, and really setting the agenda, those types of things, we really want to have in a more mic'd and appropriate kind of public setting for folks.
Thank you.
Council, or Mayor Protan Santos.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Sandy, you touched on what I read in the packet, that this, if we have our retreat, our retreat in April, more lines up with getting, staff getting the budget put together. So, you know, the idea of having a team building in January, like I said, I, I think that, you know, we'd never get to, the times we have dinner together, we're always either an executive session or, you know, we, we just don't get that opportunity. Of course, it would be a, a, a noticed meeting. In fact, I did, Councilmember Levison, I did talk to Hal and the swearing-in, and he thought that was a great idea. So, you know, so I'll, I'll make, I'll make the motion is that we have a team building, team building date in January. Again, I, I think some sort of dinner would be appropriate. It could be later in the after, later in the afternoon into the evenings, so our spouses and our significant others can attend. Staff as well would be welcome. That way, again, to get to know each other and then let's just move that and then we'll get back to whether or not we have a retreat in April or whenever.
Do we have a second? Hey, we've got a second. Any other discussion on that? Shall we vote on that? Oops. Okay. So it's unanimous, we will have a team building session in January.
Just want to clarify one piece. Is that something that you would like for Kathy Novak to facilitate? Or, doesn't matter, just, just some sort of a team building piece? And I'm assuming that this is a council plus facilitator, team building, and then dinner with, with the entire management team and their spouses? Okay. Just want to clarify those two pieces. But you're looking at some sort of an outside facilitator for the team building piece?
Councilmember Santos.
You know, we have good facilitators here in the city. There's no need to spend money. I think for the overall two-day retreat in April, and Kathy Novak did do a very good job, that might be something to look at. But my suggestion and I guess my motion would be that for the retreat in April, the first available date possible, and on, on a Friday or, you know, coinciding with any other meetings or conferences or what have you, the sooner the better. So that, that would be my motion. And then the, my only other comment would be that I would, I'd make a suggestion that we send the work plan to all members of council so the three new members can look at the work, work plan that was for 2011 and start formulating ideas. And again, in council comments, somebody can say, hey, this is on the work plan. I'd like to add something to it.
So we've got a motion, we've got a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Levison.
I, I have a little bit of conflict with the beginning of April, and I, I just sort of assumed that Councilmember Santos being tax season, I, I didn't know that you would be available early part of April, so.
Don't worry about me.
Okay, fine. I, I do have, I do have a, a conflict for that first part of April, so I, I'm not really available that first weekend.
Yeah.
And then I, I would look, I would ask that maybe you investigate a, a lower-cost option for team building. I, I really think that the, the, how productive we had a retreat the last time was really having somebody from the outside. And to do a specific kind of team building activity, I really do think that sometimes we can get somebody who's, maybe we can borrow somebody from another city. That suggestion's been made before, that it, it brings something different and fresh to have somebody from the outside.
So just to clarify, somebody who, so for the team building in January, somebody from the outside that's not particularly expensive, maybe a borrow.
And I would be happy asking Kathy Novak back to do the retreat, the full retreat.
I guess we have a motion that's been seconded and any other discussion? Yeah, could, could you read back the motion, please, sir?
I believe it was Councilmember Santos moved to find the first available dates in April and send the work plan, to the 2011 work plan to all council members, and find an outside facilitator for a two-day retreat.
Any other discussion? Shall we vote? It passes unanimously?
And Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, I should mention that the, that the new council members did receive the 2011 work plan in your orientation packet in the last section, so. So already fulfilled, already done. But we'll send it again if you'd like.
So I guess we get to the part now about comments from council members and, and the mayor. Normally, I let the council members go first, but being mayor, I'm going to actually go first tonight. Basically, you know, the, the most important thing we're going to be doing is picking a city manager. And I know we have a process that's a very well-defined process, and we intend to follow that process, but I would like to, for the citizens of Longmont, invite Mike Butler to put in his application. You know, he's well-regarded by several community members, he's well-regarded by myself and several council members. That being said, it doesn't mean that he's got a shoe in for a jo, the job. You know, we still have to go through and look at all the prospects and the method that has been laid out and follow the standards that was adopted for picking the city manager. But I just think we, as a city, would be served to at least have, you know, a really quality person like Mike Butler to submit their application. So I am personally asking him to submit his application. Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm one of those council members, chief, that I don't know how the process is going to end up. I do believe that we have a process that we need to follow, but I would encourage and act, ask on behalf of the constituents in my ward that you apply. I think that it would be a stronger process if you applied. My impression is that nobody on the city staff has applied. I come from a world, obviously, after tonight, it's not very political. But one thing I do feel comfortable with is stating I know a little bit about succession planning and having someone that everybody respects and admires, someone who seems self-effacing. I think having your hat in the ring as we begin the process, not knowing what's going to happen, it would be a better process in Longmont. And Longmont would be better off having you in it. So I know that you're not, you've got 11 minutes to declare your application in the ring, but I'm one of those council members who would appreciate you applying.
Any other discussion or any other council members' comments? Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand that maybe nobody mentioned why I was gone last week, like I rarely miss a council meeting, but I was, and I, I believe it might have been on our council calendar that was posted. Last week, I got on a plane at Tuesday morning at 8:00 a.m., which means I got up at a really ungodly hour after our swearing-in, and went to the National League of Cities Conference in Phoenix, the Congress of Cities exposition, Congress of Cities and exposition, and really started the day, 1:30 in the afternoon with an educational workshop, and then basically tried to cover as much as I could in the conference that had four concurrent tracks, green cities, infrastructure, economic development, and a special convening of a conference with topics on youth, education, and family. Christina Pacheco, who we saw tonight with the proclamation and presentation, also attended, and she was able to cover only a portion of that youth, education, and family conference. I'm going to try to work with Christina, and we'll put together something for a future council meeting. I'll go to the other side of the podium. But I, there were really great opportunities at the conference. I did attend the Western Municipal League meeting on Saturday morning with a lot of good information. And some of the topics were pretty amazing, and it was very hard to choose. But I'll, I'll give you a full report later, and I've already contacted some staff members with some very interesting and exciting ideas that I learned from other cities. And I also was elected to the National Board for the Women in Municipal Government Wimage. So that, one more, one more meeting to go to at these boards. Couple of successful things from the Steering Committee, from the Finance Administration and Intergovernmental Relations. The committee advocacy position on the federal government rule that was going to be potentially enacted, that the cities were going to have to keep track of a, a 3% withholding for construction companies and projects, was successfully defeated in Congress. And also, the resolution that we had worked on this summer to encourage resolution of debt and deficit problems has actually gained some attention by our lawmakers in Washington and has been made part of some policy changes for National League of Cities. So when we all go to Washington in March, we have some fun things to do, and I'm looking forward to everybody signing up for March for that meeting.
Thank you. City manager, any comments?
Mayor and council, just to remind you that it's the bottom of your agenda is upcoming council meetings, and we did not get all of those corrected, so on the 22nd, your meeting has been canceled, so you will not have a regular session. On the 29th, you'll have a regular session. And then on the 29th, we'll bring back your revisions to your December meeting, but for sure, your 27th meeting will be canceled.
Okay, thank you. City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right. We are adjourned.